Good morning, Mayor Gondik and members of council. My name is Jeff Chase from the Partnerships Business Unit. Today on the housing front, we have three connected reports. And before I start, I just want to say how fitting it was to be presenting after Colton this morning. The essay, I think, is important for all of us as we think about this housing work. With me from administration is Tim Ward from Housing Solutions, Josh White from City and Regional Planning, Campbell Berry from Real Estate Development Services, Deb Hamilton from Community Planning, and a number of other colleagues are on the line. Joining today from the Housing and Affordability Task Force is Maya Cambies, soon-to-be Dr. Teresa Goldstein, Garrett Oyshy, Menorah Olguin, and no stranger to any of us, Melanie Halsker. Before I hand it over to Tim for the presentation, I just wanted to offer a few opening remarks. We are in a housing crisis. In addition to the social reasons to address this crisis, our competitive advantage and economic edge truly depends on our ability to offer affordable and accessible housing. Our reputation as a world-class, livable, and affordable city is at risk. Administration is doing what we can to move the needle and address this. That includes refreshing policy tools, leveraging resources to support new development, aggressively capitalizing on funds from other orders of government, and improving efficiency through cutting red tape. But to move this needle requires a comprehensive set of actions that cover all the aspects of the housing system. Federal and provincial funding is still the single most important resource to help push the needle to move forward towards this horizon. But the city also has a significant role to play with resources and action that make building housing easier. Working with our partners is absolutely critical. We know we are more effective when we work together. The Indigenous Housing Recommendations and the Housing Task Force represent bold approaches to collaboration that are making a difference in our effectiveness as a team. They will inform the Corporate Affordable Housing Strategy Refresh, which we'll see later this year in a pragmatic way. Though there may be a desire today to dig into specific actions and details of interest in each of the three reports, we hope that we can, through a series of interrelated reports, tell an integrated narrative that is big-picture, strategic, and coordinated. I want to emphasize that we intend to leverage Housing Accelerator Funds and every dollar and cent from other sources that we can. The total cost for the entire envelope of work will depend on how far and how fast council chooses to go and how successful we are with respect to funding from other orders of government. We'll begin today with the Housing Task Force recommendation. These recommendations reflect a broad range of actions to address the market and non-market housing system in our city. Thank you again to the task force for the collaborative, creative, and dedicated work. The Indigenous Housing Recommendations represent a significant body of work undertaken with elders whom we are also very grateful for. The Indigenous Housing Recommendations are in alignment with the Housing Task Force. I want to highlight, though, the Indigenous Housing Recommendations were undertaken through a parallel process and also stand on their own. And lastly, today you'll see the Housing Accelerator Fund also in alignment with these other bodies of work. The fund represents a significant funding source to help fuel much of this work. And with that, I will turn it over to Tim Ward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Good morning. My name is Tim Ward. I'm the manager of Housing Solutions and have also been serving as the Chair of the Housing and Affordability Task Force. The first housing item today is on the Housing and Affordability Task Force. So last year, administration was directed by council to create a Housing and Affordability Task Force that would report back to council on housing affordability and affordable housing issues. Administration created a task force through an open and transparent process that selected 10 volunteer members with a wide array of skills and experience, combined with five members from administration. Task Force members were volunteers. They spent countless hours in the evenings reviewing materials, hearing from experts, and providing their own expertise and lived experience. They did this because they want to see a better Calgary, one where everyone has a home. So these are the recommendations before council. Actually, if you could go to the next slide, please. These are the recommendations before council. I will come back to these at the end and describe them in more detail and what their purpose is. What I will cover is the housing crisis that we're in and the reason that we need to act, how this aligns and interacts with other housing items on the agenda today, and I'll work on housing more broadly. And I'll end by speaking about the task force process and go into more detail on administration's recommendations. I will then pass it over to Maya Cambies and soon-to-be Dr. Teresa Goldstein, who will provide more detail on the task force recommendations. Next slide, please. As the task force has done its work over the last nine months, these are the headlines that the task force members have been seeing and reading. They speak to the housing crisis that we are in and that has become exponentially worse over the nine months that they've been working. For so long, Calgary's incredible housing affordability has been one of the key pillars in our economic edge. It's frequently cited as one of the main components of Calgary's status as one of the world's most livable cities. If we lose our housing affordability, we lose all manner of economic benefits that come from being a city where people can afford to live, can afford to raise a family, and start a business, and contribute to that continued economic growth. Next slide, please. These are the numbers that speak to the situation we are in. One in five can't afford their housing. One in 10 are at risk of homelessness. By some indicators, rents may be up by as much as 25% in the last year. Over the last four years, the average price for a home has increased by 29%, from $420,000 to $540,000. And we survey people living in Calgary regularly to see what they want to see. And when we do that, they tell us they want to see more investment in affordable housing. Affordable housing is one of the most important issues to people living in Calgary. And during the recent YYC Matters survey on the provincial election, affordable housing was one of the top issues for people living in Calgary. Next slide, please. So this report is one of three before council today. Each one stands alone but has some measure of dependency on the other. For example, there are recommendations in the Housing and Affordability Task Force report that also relate to Indigenous housing. Administration has noted in the cover reports and attachments where there is overlap and alignment. Next slide, please. And ultimately, our work on housing is converging. So there are three reports before council today, and then later this year, council will be presented with a proposed, updated Corporate Affordable Housing Strategy, which will be the vehicle for many of the recommendations before council today. The strategy will also be the tool that we use to monitor and measure our performance with regular reporting back against the actions. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, last year, administration created the task force after the direction from council through a notice of motion. Following approval of that notice of motion, members of the task force were recruited through a public and transparent process, bringing together 15 experts from diverse fields who build, study, and have experience working and living across the housing continuum. Between September last year and April this year, the task force met regularly to listen and learn from experts who also work, live, and study across the housing continuum. Broad-scale public engagement was not within the scope of the task force. The scope of the task force was to bring together experts and develop recommendations for council's contemplation on housing affordability and affordable housing. The task force did advance targeted opportunities for public input and participation. This included a public portal and conversations with the city's boards, committees, and commissions. Next slide, please. This is step two of a multi-step process, and I will speak a little bit more about the recommendations on the next slide. But council today is being asked to acknowledge the task force recommendations as being the right ones to pursue to help address our city's housing and housing affordability issues, and to direct council to begin a careful process of implementation, including returning to council for further decisions. Next slide, please. So should council approve these recommendations today from administration? Administration would begin a careful implementation of the task force's recommendation. And that implementation would broadly fall into three different categories. The first is work that can be done within existing resources. So an example of this would be the recommendations from the task force that relate to advocacy or the change processes, for example, around the non-market housing land sale that are changes to the way that we work with providers. The second category is recommendations that are a financial request. So for example, the proposal to allocate annual funding to a housing land fund. These recommendations would be forwarded into the 2024 budget adjustment process and would be forwarded to the executive committee item Strategic Discussion on and Delivering on Plans and Budgets. Council is not being asked to decide on those financial recommendations today and would instead be able to weigh them against other financial proposals coming forward. The third and final category is recommendations that require further implementation work, potential public hearings, and subsequent council decisions. Examples of this include the recommendations where there is a change or the creation of a bylaw and the recommendations related to property tax exemptions. For those recommendations, administration would begin the process of implementation, which includes assessing risks, doing option analysis, and may include a public hearing before returning to council. That concludes the presentation from administration. I'd like to once again thank the task force members for their tireless work to craft the recommendations before council and invite Maya and Teresa up to the podium to give a presentation if we're able to.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Council members and Mayor Gondik. My name is Maya Cambies. I'm a mother of two and a proud Calgarian. For the past 13 years as CEO of Norfolk Housing Association, I have led and supported an incredible group of community champions, creating inclusive and diverse communities where everyone has the right to feel at home. I haven't had my coffee some a little bit. I am deeply committed to this work, and I'm really passionate about ensuring that our city can be resilient and adaptable because every day I witness the struggles and the impacts of poverty and lack of housing choice. What I also witness every day is what housing stability and affordability can do for an individual's capacity to integrate into community, to feel a sense of empowerment and belonging, feel respected and dignified. It's an incredible and overwhelming sight to see how each person, by simply having their needs met and respected, contributes to the resiliency of the community, how they then turn to care for one another, to care for their surroundings, to care for the environment, and to care for their city. I'm honored to be with you today on behalf of task force members. Since September, task force members have gathered over 22 times, and we've spent many, many hours away from our families. They have dedicated themselves to listening to experts, listening to those with lived experience, and listening to those who advocate for a better and more equitable Calgary. They all deserve our gratitude today, and I want to acknowledge their commitment. There were many long and difficult conversations, and you're going to hear this a lot today, and it's fact. There were many long and difficult conversations because the crisis we face as Calgarians is complex. Each one of us had many reasons to put ourselves forward, to participate in the task force, but we all shared a common vision and a passion for making life better for our fellow citizens. Whether through our own lived experience, knowing someone in our circle who struggles with housing affordability because one in five do in Calgary, or working directly in this field, we felt the importance of this issue and the role that it deeply plays in Calgary's ability to thrive, not only socially but economically as well. The bottom line is that housing is a basic human need. It's a priority for Calgarians, as evidenced by the many headlines that Tim referred to, and what the city of Calgary also sees in its own surveys of citizens. Inaction is costly financially and socially, and housing affordability, again, I repeat, is vital to our economic well-being. We all have a role to play in tackling this complex issue. So today I call on each one of us to think about what we can do individually to support the recommendations that are presented today. We have many levers to pull, and we need these critical recommendations as a framework that gets us to a place where we are not reactive to a crisis that in many ways and for many folks in Calgary is already here. Now, I'm not a native Calgarian. I moved here from Bosnia with my family in 1994. So I'm a little bit familiar with housing insecurity and instability. And this is very traumatic. It's a very traumatic experience. And I feel strongly that we cannot continue to subject citizens to this insecurity when we know what the solutions are. What I learned about Calgary in the early days of living here and what I see every day that I'm lucky enough to call this place home is that Calgarians are problem solvers. Calgarians have grit, compassion, and we see the big picture. And I know that we know that not providing and ensuring that our citizens have basic needs like housing is catastrophic for well-being of our communities, and it makes no economic sense. So as a citizen, as a mother, as an adopted Calgarian, and I thank you, all native Calgarians, I ask you today to be bold in your leadership on these recommendations because we cannot financially or socially afford inaction.
Thank you, Maya. And before I begin, clerks, could you please put up the presentation from the task force? I think maybe next slide. It should go to a cover.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's part of the package. So as we wait, maybe I can introduce myself. Many of you know me already, Teresa Goldstein. And I am truly honored to be here today to speak to you about the Housing Affordability Task Force recommendations. And some of you know me. I am passionate about city. I'm a passionate city builder, and I'm an advocate of Calgary and housing. This is why I joined the task force. Maya and I are going to speak to you about a wide breadth of recommendations, but I wanted to begin by recognizing that this is the kind of question that great cities around the world are also asking themselves. How do we remain affordable? How do we remain the choice for people to come and live and create lives? Today, as you listen to our recommendations, our only ask is that you clear your heads and listen openly. You asked us to be bold and ambitious, and the recommendations before you are that. Follow along with genuine curiosity. Please ask us questions if you're wondering why we asked or recommended this. There are 33 actions under six recommendations. And most importantly, I want to talk about people. These are not housing units. These are homes. This is not 110,000 widgets that will move here over the next four years. This is 110,000 people, your people. This is about people and ensuring that we literally have places to live so that people can continue to choose Calgary, thrive in Calgary, recover in Calgary, build their lives in Calgary, and spend their hard-earned economic value in Calgary. Maya?
Okay, we're on the right slide. The time for bold action is now.
Perfect.
Thank you. As Teresa mentioned, Calgary's population growth has surpassed expectations, increasing by 100,000 over the past four years. And the city's population is expected to grow by another 110,000 in the next four years. We need a diverse range of housing options in all communities so that all Calgarians can find homes that meet their needs. The city has a role to play in strengthening and supporting our system of housing providers who are on the front lines of this crisis and who are working tirelessly to ensure people obtain affordable and adequate housing and supports, and also so that our citizens can maintain their housing. Renters in Calgary also deserve to understand their rights and have access to a home that will not cause risk to their health and safety. We heard a great deal about barriers to having substandard conditions addressed, and so the city can do more to advocate for not only legislative changes but adequate supports for those experiencing substandard conditions because these issues are complex. If no action is taken now, housing affordability will continue to erode at an alarming pace. We are losing ground on the supply and condition of non-market affordable housing. This has severe consequences, as I mentioned, to our social well-being and to that of Calgarians who are at risk of having to spend ever-increasing shares of their household income on housing and who are at greater risk of homelessness. A lack of affordability limits our city's ability to attract and retain talent, to grow and diversify our economy, and to continue to build that world-class city. In the supporting materials you received, you would have noted that Calgary Economic Development has indicated that individual Calgarians earning less than about $86,000 per year, which is 95% of wage earners in the city, have affordable access to only 39% of Calgary's market housing stock. I'm not sure how we can say that we're not in a crisis.
Shame on that!
There's no disruptions from the audience, please. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Whoever is willing to say that this is not a problem worthy of swift and bold action is simply not listening. I'm going to say that again. Calgarians earning around $86,000 a year only have access to 39% of housing stock today. Lack of affordable housing choices within our city also results in people seeking housing they can afford, further away from the center of our communities and outside our city's boundaries, increasing our environmental footprint. Do we want people driving until they qualify for housing? I would think that we would want Calgarians to have a choice, to stay in the city, to stay close to where they work and play, or close to their family and support systems. The recommendations in front of you provide a path to more available market and non-market housing. They will improve housing choice, diversity, and affordability, and this will improve our collective social, economic, and environmental resilience as well. Teresa?
Next slide, please. You know, the task force was aligned on that we cannot turn a blind eye to this because the people that are affected by this crisis are not strangers or some distant group. They're our friends, our family members, our neighbors, even our own children now and in the future. We also cannot pretend that this doesn't exist or that somebody else is going to take care of it. Keeping things the same will land us right here again and again. And to be clear, today is the first step in this process. It's not the last, as Tim explained. We need to take bold and decisive action today. Excuse me. Sorry, I got a little bit caught up there, which is true because this is how housing affects us as people. Through this work, you can see that a number of themes emerged. They're listed on the slide before you. And these recommendations are about getting more housing in Calgary now, period, today. The actions are bold, and they aim to increase and diversify our current supply so that that number, the number that Maya cited, goes up, and we continue to be able to grow and literally provide houses for those that are moving here. We need to strengthen the housing sector through partnerships, and we need to improve rental housing for all Calgarians. Next slide, please. Well, you guys know me. I am not one to shy away from talking about the complexities of city planning and how the language of urban planning is very complex. Getting through a development approvals process, Josh, cover your ears, it's not super easy all the time. And diversity of housing choice and regulatory reform was top of mind for the task force. We talked a lot about this. The first recommendation before you in your package talks about building and creating more housing now and diversifying the housing stock. We hear council often talk about leaning on the private sector to deliver increased development, and this is what it does: buy 1,000 more homes than the market would be normally creating, and to partner with nonprofits to create at least 3,000 new non-market homes each year. This is a private and public solution, making it easier to build housing across our city by amending municipal planning policies, plans, and establishing and continuing to fund our current incentive programs. I wanted to give you a small bit of context on this. From a housing affordability perspective, Calgary's housing market is considered affordable in relation to other Canadian markets like Montreal or Vancouver or Toronto. This is our advantage. Council, this is our advantage. People are coming here because they can see this affordability. Calgary Economic Development did a lot of work to show that to Torontonians. It was all over the news. If we zoom in on our actual housing stock that we have today, Calgary does not have an adequate or diverse enough supply. You just heard from Maya, those people that are earning around $90,000 a year only have access to just under 40% of our stock. Factors influencing affordability include price, supply, and distribution of housing in our city. Forecasts indicate that there will be large changes in the coming decades, that not only to the total population but also the makeup of the population. Multi-generational housing, seniors' housing, people are living longer, and they're living with their families. They're having their families move in and to their homes. This means we need to increase the overall supply of housing but also increase the diversity of housing forms. So build more housing, different types of housing, and reach all levels of affordability. These were the basic principles that the task force talked about. Setting a target, like those included in your recommendations, makes it clear and less nebulous to communities. This doesn't mean, for example, when we recommended 15% of every new local area plan would contain 15% non-market housing, it does not mean that 15% will instantly appear overnight. But it does mean that the city with increased development options in the future will continue to hit that target. Actions 1, B, C, D, and E are about regulatory reform. Incorporating all low-density homes together in a single land use will future-proof your neighborhoods. The new community areas around Calgary, and I was astonished when I did this investigation, inwards, 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 9, 12, 13, and 14 already do this, guys. Already do this. The R.G. district already allows this to happen, and they're in all your wards. The dominant housing form in Calgary is single, and we are not talking about making that go away. But there always seems to be an elephant in the room when we talk about this. I don't want this to take up any more space. We have a lot of work to do, and we have to roll up our sleeves. What will happen, though, is eventually our wood-frame homes will come to the end of their lives. And when they do, we will either tear them down and redevelop them, we'll move to find something else, somewhere else in the city or elsewhere in our country, and we will have no flexibility to build any of those other options that I talked about. Having flexibility in land use does not mean that every home will instantly be converted. Look at the narrative around secondary suites. What it does mean is that as Calgary evolves, grows, and diversifies, our housing stock will be well-positioned to grow in the future. Developing multiple homes in the future on a previously single home site supports more Calgarians and families. Maintaining the city-owned land for non-market and affordable housing is also a critical step. We're making the recommendation to increase that program. And adding to the city's downtown development incentive programs is a no-brainer. We know that that is working. We want to support it. And lastly, in recommendation 3, ensuring that the supply of affordable housing meets the needs of equity-deserving and Indigenous people living in Calgary is critical. Indigenous people living in Calgary and equity-deserving communities are over Indigenous people living in Calgary and equity-deserving communities are overrepresented when it comes to homelessness and the need for subsidized housing. Housing need can be different for different populations, and while it's critical to increase the supply, it's equally critical to ensure that the housing created meets specific needs. I'll now turn it over to Maya to go over the last three recommendations.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Recommendations 4 and 5 seek to strengthen the housing sector to support partnerships and collaboration, and foster greater impact than if the sector were to act alone. I spent some time speaking to stakeholders within the housing sector and exploring, and as we explored, housing and housing affordability challenges. It was noted that there is a need to foster greater coordination and collaboration within the sector. There is increased financial pressure to live in, operate, and maintain affordable housing. And there are known solutions and things that are working really well, and we want the city to expand those programs and double down on those incentives to help nonprofits build. To strengthen the housing sector and increase impact, the task force recommends the following recommendation: 4, convene the housing sector to collaborate. Oh, sorry. Presently, there's limited coordination that exists between governments, developers, and nonprofit housing providers to foster that collaboration with the goal of increasing the supply of affordable housing in Calgary. As a sector, we have been here before in front of council, sounding the alarm about housing affordability and the need to collaborate. The sector then rolled up its sleeves on numerous occasions, got to building, went on to collaborate and advocate, but we cannot shoulder the solutions to the housing affordability crisis on our own. We build housing, we serve Calgarians with dignity and compassion, we understand and are there for Calgarians at times when they are experiencing the worst day in their life. We also employ some of the most passionate folks in the city, but with each funding cut or absolution of responsibility by government, any level of government, our capacity as a sector is eroded. So recommendation 4 is about supporting and funding the coordination of key partners who are ready and committed to the delivery of affordable housing, who are working in your communities to reduce stigma and prejudice against our city's most vulnerable, and who want to see better supports for those who are in greatest need. This recommendation also includes actions that support a centralized intake system to improve the experience, to make navigation of the housing system easier and more equitable, and to reduce barriers for those who are seeking affordable housing. Recommendation 5 is to increase investment to support housing providers. We're challenged to operate and maintain affordable housing programs due to record inflation and increasing costs. The city has opportunities to reduce pressure on nonprofit housing providers and support the sector to work together to address the housing needs for Calgarians. If we work collaboratively on the most pressing challenges, we will strengthen the sector. We need advocacy to other levels of government on using a portion of municipal reserves for affordable housing, for example. Or more tax revenues from both the province and the federal government to address the local needs and the challenges to the creation and maintenance of affordable housing. And as I mentioned, there are many financial constraints operating and maintaining affordable homes. Property taxes are a significant cost burden on providers. Property tax exemptions are a very powerful tool that the city can use to significantly reduce that burden. Streamlining exemptions and removing the cost of municipal property taxes allows nonprofits to reduce rents, invest in much-needed maintenance and preservation of our community assets. I'll just give you a quick example. For Norfolk Housing Association, it costs about $5,000 a year, between $5,000 and $8,000 a year to subsidize someone. Property taxes, and I run a social enterprise model, property taxes are my fourth-largest expense. So think about what I can do with that money and how many Calgarians I can support, quite a few. Finally, I heard, and we heard, that the housing incentive program requires more funding to prioritize housing needs for specific populations. This is one of the many important tools that the city already has at its disposal, and we have heard from the sector that it is crucial and should be expanded and further supported. Next slide, please. Our final recommendations speaks to this third outcome that the task force seeks to achieve, and it's to address inadequate housing for individuals living in rental housing in our city. We heard from many Calgarians that not only is supply and diversity of housing needed, but we need to ensure that that housing meets standards. And this would be achieved by the following recommendation: Ensuring more individuals have a safe place to call home by supporting programming that increases awareness among renters, investigating models used in other jurisdictions to ensure that the rents are balanced, and providing funding for programming that can prevent Calgarians from becoming unhoused. Renters who experience adverse living conditions, which may cause risks to their health and safety, shouldn't also experience barriers to finding a residence or even risk the loss of their rental. The federal and provincial governments have the necessary authorities to support Calgarians in overcoming these challenges, including improving legislation and awareness on rights and responsibilities. Calgary's tight rental market has not only pushed rents higher, but it has also created an environment where Calgarians in need of affordable housing are forced to consider properties with poor housing conditions, pest issues, and some landlords who can't keep up with minimum health and housing conditions. The city can support tenants and governments to address inadequate housing conditions by creating awareness of tenants' renters' rights through a similar program like the one at the city of Edmonton, within the city of Edmonton called Supports for Tenant Service. Financial supports are also needed to ensure that renters can navigate instances of unsafe and inadequate conditions, maintain their housing, and work collaboratively with landlords to meet those housing standards. Now, there is an action under this recommendation that talks about rent control. While the idea of rent control models could give some of you pause, the task force did feel it was important to ensure that the city of Calgary investigate models used in other jurisdictions to ensure market rents are balanced, remain affordable, and so we can better understand the cost drivers for rent. We would like to see the city of Calgary then advocate those findings to other levels of government. It is important that we not leave certain tools on the table, and that we continue to investigate and collaborate on what may work for our city. It doesn't necessarily mean rent control, but it is important to find a balanced solution that works for the Calgary market. There are examples out there. Winnipeg has an open-market policy for properties built after 1990, but rent control measures for older properties built prior to 1990. We want to investigate those models, we want to encourage administration to do so. Finally, the task force felt that there were existing programs and collaborative funding opportunities that would allow for better planning, evaluation, and investment into improved services for those in affordable housing or those experiencing homelessness. Partnerships and funding for community programs that support individuals in housing to access funds for first-last rent can yield lifesaving impacts for those who find themselves in precarious situations. Funding for prevention models that keep people housed will significantly reduce instances of housing insecurity and the trauma associated with these experiences.
Counsel, the bottom line is that the task force recommendations call for action now. Advancement of the recommendations will address housing and housing affordability challenges being faced by many Calgarians. The 33 actions are a package together, structured to look at the entire housing system, not one piece over the other. It's not à la carte. Can we have a next slide? Apologies.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We know that turning the curve on housing affordability takes time, but we don't have any more time. This is the first step forward. With rising inflation, increased cost of living, and the expected population growth that we've discussed today, we need more housing now. I'm sure you understand that keeping the line like it is today will ensure that we continue to squeeze affordability, lessen our competitive edge, and have families in your communities move away to find housing that they can afford. Many Calgarians continue and will continue to struggle to afford housing and other basic needs. Please do not think of housing as a wedge issue. This isn't pitting some against others, this isn't partisan. This is about literally keeping our strong, economically positive city that needs more housing. When we celebrate big economic wins, I often think, I hope there are places for those people that are coming to work or already here working to live. Call me crazy, but when we talk about that statistic around the income, when the medium-income earners in your city should be able to afford the medium amount of homes. Housing affordability is one of those pieces that's very easy to lose and near impossible to get back. The task force has worked to provide a path forward, so let's focus on fundamentally taking action today. By now, you've all heard the saying, "Housing is a basic human need." We all need housing. Housing should be accessible to everyone regardless of their income, and by prioritizing and making decisions to keep housing affordable in your city, it's not a charity, it's not a handout, but rather it's an essential component of a healthy, economically strong city. It's our time to shift our minds from apologizing for providing housing choice and affordability to recognizing and shouting this from the rooftops as our competitive advantage. The issues are complex. We're giving you a snapshot of nine months' worth of work and many hard conversations that the task force had, but we owe it to our children and future generations to create a city where everyone has a place to call home. In the spirit of Calgarians, our neighbors, let's roll up our sleeves and work together to make it happen. It won't be easy, it's going to take courage, but it's a fight worth fighting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We have got a queue of folks that have questions for you. We're also approaching lunchtime, so I think you may have to spill over into the afternoon. I hope you can stay with us. Thanks for your patience. Let's go to Counselor Demong. I think you may have had something procedural.
Actually, I did, yes. I was wondering if I could have clerks distribute a letter to members of council and add it to the corporate record, please.
That's good. Okay, good. Yep, they can do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp, please.
Thanks. I'll start with maybe Ms. Goldstein, because it's just in case she has to leave. I need to reflect on your last comment. Are you saying that council needs to do all of this or nothing?
Counselor Sharp, I'm saying that when we looked, the task force worked together to look at the whole housing spectrum, and so we didn't want to prioritize, for example, community supports over other levers like regulatory reform. They work together. And so, for example, having increased community supports while at the same time increasing the supply would only make sense.
Thanks. I wanted just to clarify that.
Of course.
My next tranche of questions mostly are for administration, but first, before I start, I just want to say thank you to all the task force members for doing this great work. I really think that you were given a direction and you did it. So my next questions are all geared to administration, and I really appreciate the stories and everything you said today and sharing that. I housed an unhoused individual that some people know about when I was much younger, my family did. So I understand, empathize, and I hear where you're coming from. My questions, though, are going to take the emotion out of it, because we are a governing body, and I have to ask some fundamental questions of administration about what's in front of us today. So thank you so much for sharing and being here. So my first question for administration is, initially, when I was given the impression we would be asked to endorse recommendations, the report says we're just receiving them. On Friday, we received a memo that said council's being asked to acknowledge these recommendations as the right path forward. So which is it are you asking us to do today? Because with many of these, but not quite all, I'm willing to endorse, but there are things I cannot support, and I don't actually know a path forward to be able to bring that forward today. So, Mr. Ward, I'm going to start that question with you.
Yep. Thank you for the question, Counselor Sharp, and apologies for the confusion. For sure, the recommendation is to receive the recommendations. The subsequent recommendations in the cover report request direction to begin the process of implementation. The attachment to also highlights those recommendations that would be coming back to council for further decisions. So some of the biggest, most impactful items that are recommended by the task force would come back to council, there would be a public hearing, and then there would be a subsequent council decision.
So are you talking about, like, recommendation, under recommendation 1, rescinding the single detached, so I'll just use letters, okay? Recommendation 1, B, D, E, those type of things? Or even recommendation 2, when you look at the funding for B, and then there's F, which we've given Downtown Strategy money for? You guys have put us in a position today, just in case we're wondering, in that memo, you had my full support before that memo. Doing that on a Friday before we're coming back here, this has happened twice. So I'm going to continue my questions. Obviously, removing any sort of bylaws or rescinding would have to come back as a public hearing. What I don't understand is, where is the planning's execution plan of that? When is that happening? So do we have that? Do we have an execution plan?
I'll just answer the question on, so those recommendations that have stars next to them, those are recommendations that are identified that would come back for a further subsequent council decision. We have worked very closely with our colleagues in Planning and Development Services around, you know, these recommendations would give them direction to begin the process of implementation, creating that pathway forward, and coming back to council at the appropriate time.
Okay. Why would we even pursue rent control when it's clearly not in the city's jurisdiction?
I think as Maya spoke to, you know, when, as the task force has been doing this work, they have seen the conditions in this city change. We've seen indications that rents have gone up by as much as 25%. I think they felt it would be remiss not to consider the value of investigating how to make sure residents are not experiencing such drastic swings. I think we do acknowledge that that would be an advocacy piece, and that we would advocate to the provincial government based on our findings, and the investigation would be neutral in terms of saying, what can we do when we experience such wild swings in rent?
Okay, and then my next question is, why 2025? If we're in a crisis, that's how we opened the presentation, why 2025 and why not Q4, Q3, 2024? Why do we need two and a half years?
I would say just the, you know, to acknowledge the work that is required to carry that out, that was the acknowledgement. I think as well, you know, where there are kind of dates that we may need to bring up, we can definitely make that adjustment.
So Mayor, I know my time's up, I have one question and then one procedural question for you. Okay. Does administration come back for council approval before or after an amendment has done the work, and is it formality, or do we actually debate what's best?
I would say for those recommendations that are a star, it is not a formality at all. It is coming back for a subsequent council decision.
Okay, thanks. So Mayor, my question for you with procedure is, I do have amendments that I'm willing to bring forward. I think we need to work on this over lunch break, and, because I don't think you're going to allow us to break through 33 recommendations and vote on them separately today, so I'd like the best path forward, because as a stand à la carte, I can't support this, and I know I'm getting into debate, but I hope that some of us can work over lunch hour and make sure that this does pass the right way, because I'll tell you, they had my support before that memo.
I'm happy to work with anybody on amendments at any time. As of about 6:00 PM last night, everyone assured me they had no amendments, so happy to work over the lunch hour, but a little bit surprised that everyone is choosing now to bring that up. So disappointed that the amendments that you have didn't come forward, but we can do it over lunch hour. All right, we'll go on to Counselor Winess, please.
Okay, I got a bunch of questions, so just, we'll go with it. Why do we want to recommend no parking minimums when we look at the headlines we're getting for the parking rate? If you were to calculate what we're currently charging for some of the inner-city stuff, it would equate to the building cost of putting parking in some of this development. So why would we not want to have it amortized over someone's mortgage rather than the current structure, which is pay structure, which is pay the city?
I'd say from the perspective of the task force, and maybe the members can come up and join me, the intent there was really to reduce red tape, to remove regulatory burdens and remove some of the costs that are associated with development. And so it fits under recommendation one, which is about developing, making it easier to build housing. The task force viewed this as a, as a big barrier and one that could be done to remove those barriers. I see Mr. White is here from planning. Maybe you want to add to that?
Josh White, Director of City and Regional Planning. I'm also here with Deb Hamilton, Director of Community Planning. We wear two hats today, both as administration, but also members of the task force that helped formulate some of these recommendations. The recommendation around zero parking minimums aligns with our recommendations writ large to reduce regulatory barriers. And what's been found across North America is that parking minimums can be an undue cost burden on the delivery of both non-market housing and, and more affordable market housing. So in the city of Calgary, we have about 7% of households that don't, don't have a vehicle. In the inner-city, that number is about 24% of households. What zero parking minimums allows is for people to self-select into developments that cater to their needs as car-free or not having car ownership. They're not then required to pay for the cost of that. So the average underground parking spa is cost about $80,000 to develop as part of development. I think another important factor here is that even though we have a zero parking minimum, it's, it's a very rare instance where you actually have zero parking. So it's a matter of deciding who's the right body, who's the right entity to decide what's the right amount of parking. It's our view that it shouldn't be something that we regulate strictly, that it's the developer, it's the builder, and it's the market, and it's the consumer who best understands the amount of parking allocation required to meet their needs. So that's why we've recommended that as part of this, because it can help materially lower costs, helps people self-select. But it also doesn't mean zero parking, it means zero parking minimums. Thanks.
So if we're talking about removing red tape, you hear a lot of concerns about how, how long the process is within administration. So are we going to make sure that when people put in applications, they have a set caseworker or, I can't remember the term you guys call it, use it, to manage that file? Or are we going to continue to hand it off to different people for approval?
Counselor Wyness, where possible, we have the same file manager carry a file through from beginning to end. Life happens, people leave, that kind of thing, so. But no, we minimize that to one file manager.
Counselor Wyness, if I may, can we come back to you after the break? Would that be all right? Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, I think we need to make a motion to postpone this to the call of the chair.
Yes, please, Mayor Gondec. We've prepared a motion for you to postpone item 9.3.1 to the call of the chair, given that item 12.2.2, which is the process to exchange information between council and the Calgary Police Commission, has been set as the first item following the launch recess.
Okay. And we can just do a voice vote on this?
Yes, please. Just looking for a mover and a second.
Counselor Penner to move it, Counselor Chabot to second it. Thank you. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, that is carried. We will take our break and we will be back at 1:15. With that, I am going to go back to the item that we had delayed to the call of the chair, which is 9.3.1. It's the Housing and Affordability Task Force recommendations. If I remember correctly, Counselor Wyness, you were in the middle of questions and I think you still had a couple of minutes, two minutes left on your timer, so we'll just reset it.
Recommendation six, why don't we educate landlords on their responsibility?
Thank you for the question. There, we actually, you know, I think that is something that we could take into account as we, as we kind of look to the program offered in Edmonton and think about how that might be extended as well. So I think we could accept that as a, as a suggestion for how we adapt the program coming from Edmonton. We also do, you know, we have actually funded a program that is in the midst of being worked out in terms of exchanging information between tenants and landlords as well. And so that is work that we can take on as administration as well.
I have more, but I don't have enough time to go into it, so I'll skip to the next one. In blanket zoning, ownership rights. So we want to have as much housing stock as fast as possible. How will that get us housing stock when people have ownership rights?
Sorry, could you just repeat the start of the question, Counselor Wyness?
Ownership rights. So when we blanket zone to RCG, there's still going to be that own homeowner that still has to take action to add that density. How does that actually get us closer to having more housing?
Thank you for the question. I, I think, you know, we accept that, you know, should, should that recommendation be put in place in terms of the, the city-initiated rezonings to RCG? It's not a process that happens overnight and neighborhoods change at the pace that they need to change at. And so it does rely on the development industry and others making those changes. What the task force considered is that, that is the first step that needs to happen in order for any action to happen. And so it will take time, but at least the conditions are there and the city has, has created the conditions where that change can happen.
Now, in the urban center, we're, we're slow to redevelop and we're kind of past the point where that zoning, especially around transit, makes sense. When you look to other urban centers, we're seeing high-rise condos or MU1 building. Why did we not do a recommendation that looked at areas where we want more density or even along Memorial Drive? RCG will not get us far enough in that prime real estate spot where it should be high-rise apartments. Why, why wasn't really a multi-layer approach presented?
I think the, the task force, we're very measured in terms of thinking about what is the right approach right now for Calgary, recognizing that what this essentially does in terms of the recommendations around the rezoning would really create a level playing field. So it would establish the same level of kind of zoning regulations that are in place in some of the outer areas Theresa mentioned in her presentation, the worlds where that kind of zoning does exist. And so it would create that leveling, level playing field across the city and give us a good starting point. The recommendations do acknowledge around, you know, around the use of HGO in, in kind of corridors as well. And so that was reflected in other areas.
And Counselor Wyness, I'll just add that I think when you were mentioning MU1, that type of a district, it's a little bit more nuanced contextually wise. So we would be looking at that through the local area plans and the different urban form categories that are most appropriate for dens, for increasing density and that kind of thing.
But if we're trying to meet a housing crisis, shouldn't we be engaging in those nuances?
Yes, but because, so the task force looked at the, increasing the base density to RCG to allow the different housing forms, and that can go where there are districts. MU1 is a very new district, and so we're not going to, we're not going to understand the different contexts throughout the entire city to do that kind of in one shot. So through each of the local area plans, those conversations are happening.
Okay. And then for our investment into downtown Calgary, we've invested a lot of money in that, and we still don't even know if there's going to, those are going to become Airbnb properties. And when you look at other, again, of other urban centers, Airbnb becomes the block to housing. So where is that balance and why would we reinvest in potential Airbnb properties?
Yeah, the, the task force thought very, very deliberately about the recommendation around downtown, the downtown funding, and also had discussions with the downtown strategy team around what the right wording of that recommendation is. You'll notice that it says "bridge funding" until that funding from other orders of government comes in. That was very purposeful to say, keep the work going, move it forward, but recognizing that that strategy is predicated on funding from other orders of government. And so, you know, and we'll, we'll talk about it probably a little bit later in terms of the Housing Accelerator, that being an example of federal funding that could help the team. I would also say that, you know, short-term rentals are absolutely a viable part of a thriving housing market. And so they have a place to play in terms of offering support, you know, and, and being part of that kind of mix. The intention from the task force was around to have a very diverse array of housing choice across the city.
But for profits, landlords are incentivized to do Airbnb because you get a greater return than putting in a long-term tenant.
I'll maybe ask the members of the downtown team just to come up and, and speak a little bit about what they're seeing from the program itself.
Counselor Wyness, thanks for that question. So far, we've got 10 projects that are announced, and of those projects that are announced, none of them are looking at Airbnb, because that's one of the things that we ask them about, if they're going to be owner-occupied, or not owner-occupied, but regular rental units. There has been, in early days, there were a few exploring that idea, but when they quickly realized that they would have to license every single unit separately in order to meet the regulations that council has put in place for Airbnb, they moved away from that model. So no, at this point, no one is planning to do that. They're all prepared to be regular rental properties.
But we won't know until they actually complete these projects and actually see what the market gives us.
Yeah, and I would say, what I would say to that is, that's true. But what we're seeing with the shortage of housing in the downtown right now, these are all likely to be regular rental units. We can't prevent, well, we could write it into our contracts that you're not allowed to do Airbnb, but that would be limiting their business opportunities. So I think that's something that if council is looking at making a change to licensing, that's something that we can deal with.
And, and that's kind of where I'm going. If we're investing in our downtown, we have a, like a desperate need for affordable housing and we're not writing it into contracts where we're spending large amounts of tax dollars, that, that opens up an area where we are failing to even address what we're trying to tackle in this, through our own policies within this organization. But my last question, because I've got five seconds, is what does step three actually look like on slide eight?
Thank you so much, Counselor Wyness. So I, I talked about this in the presentation. For, there's three categories. So the first category is recommendations that we can implement within the funding envelope that we have right now. So an example of that would be the actions around advocacy or changing the processes around pre-qualifying providers for the non-market housing land sale. The second category would be the recommendations that have a financial ask, so the downtown funding ask in particular. That would be forwarded to the 2024 adjustments process and be part of that executive committee item. The third, and the, the best example of that third category, is the, the city-initiated rezoning. The process for that, if the recommendations were approved, administration would go away, would do all of the work around the preparation work, research, impact analysis, and drafting of bylaws if that's necessary, take that back to a public hearing and a subsequent decision of council. So for all those recommendations that have a star on them, those recommendations would be coming back to council. It would not be a preconceived or a preordained thing. It would be coming back to council for a decision at that time.
That takes us to Counselor Putmans, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ward, for your presentations. I would like to drill down on LAPs a little bit. Are you the right person to go down that road with?
I will maybe ask one of my colleagues from planning to come down and answer those questions on LAPs.
Troy Gonzalez is the right one.
Thank you very much. I'm intrigued. I think we have about 70 planned over the foreseeable future across the city, seven zero LAP programs.
No, so sorry, local area plans? In total, that'd be about 42 across the city.
Okay, thank you. We just, of course, went through one with Westbrook, and I'm, question, one of the questions I have is drilling down a little bit from Counselor Wyness, is to what extent does it help alleviate the affordability crisis that we have now by adding these LAPs, designating areas for essentially RCG zoning, actually?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So to what extent can an LAP be part of the solution?
Sure. So through the LAP program, we are having detailed conversations with communities about where growth and change makes the most sense in those groups of communities. That process, we're unrolling that on a plan-by-plan basis, but those plans are ultimately 30-ish year plans. So they're intended to set a vision for growth and change over the next 30 years. We've, since we've landed two of those, they've been approved by council, we have a number of those that are underway, and they're moving at a pace of about one every two years, that's the timeline to complete one. So that's the process we're going through, through the LAPs. I think there's a distinction between the recommendation that council is considering today, which is the mandate that was given to the task force to look at our regulatory framework in the short term to respond to the acute housing crisis that we're looking at today. The LAPs, I think that certainly comes into the discussion with communities, but it happens at a bit of a slower, slower pace as those are enrolled. So like I said, we have two of those that are approved that provide for greater housing choice in the communities that they're located. And we're working on several of those fairly aggressively, but it will take us some time to bring those forward.
Thank you. I, I think the one, the project I worked on, of course, was Westbrook, and I think those folk feel it's moving fairly quickly. I guess that's fair enough, that question answered. Change of topic, how was the public notification concluded, executed? I noticed there was public engagement and public notification. It's noted in the report that there was public notification.
Do you mean about the task force itself?
About the rec, I think that's a really good point. I think it's more, I was seeking the notification for the program suggested.
For RCG?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe if clerks could pull up supplementary slide 33. Okay, so I'll just, I'll, I'll make a couple distinctions. There are, as, as Tim outlined, there are a number of recommendations that are referred to some specific processes. So if it's, for example, recommendation on the elimination or reduction of a, of a minimum parking, the recommendation refers to the, the land use bylaw renewal process in order to effect that change. And that has about an 18-month timeline that we would dovetail that recommendation into, adjudicate, and it would come to a certain public hearing around that. But to your question about RCG specifically, there's a three-step process that we would undertake. So when the recommendations came public on May 4th, we started to think about, should this be accepted, what it might look like? And so this is a visual representation of the types of steps you require, including our legislatively required public notification in order to get to a decision at the end. So what we would start with, just as a, as a high-level implementation approach, would, we would start the preparation. So we would identify the parcels through mapping, we would prepare communication letters, we would work with council on letting them understand the process and what's coming forward. We would work with council to understand exactly how it would flow to council, for instance. So would it go through Calgary Planning Commission, would it go through committee? It could go straight to council. For example, the analogous process here would be the way secondary suites ended up getting legalized citywide. So it came from council direction, we took these exact steps and took, went through a public hearing. So after we've done that preparation, we've drafted, we've identified all the legal parcels that we would need to notify, that would start a notification process, which includes a lot of public participation. And so we would send communication out to affected landowners, we would send communication in a plain language explaining what is happening and the information that homeowners need in order to participate in that process. There would also be legal letters that would go along with it, that are legislatively required that, that detail out in, in, in certain language, what's going on. We would begin a process of advertising as well alongside with that. So that would include some of those tactics laid out there in terms of bringing broad public awareness around what's going on. We would do our legal advertising as well. And then that would all culminate in a decision that council would adjudicate through a public hearing process. And that provides citizens the opportunity to have their say through a public hearing process for a bylaw. And then council's the ultimate decider at the end of this decision process around whether they accept that bylaw change or not. The timeline we've laid out here aligns to the way the recommendation and act- The timeline we've laid out here aligns to the way the recommendation and action in the task force recommendations is laid out, and that's to begin that process immediately and come and to a public hearing no later than Q2 2024. I will note that we can do it on a different, faster or slower timeline, should council wish, as well.
Thank you, thank you. When you released the material on May 4th, was it broadly circulated when you mentioned it became public? I was never quite sure what that meant.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Putmans. So we, yes, when the recommendations were released publicly, we shared them ahead of time with council through a memo and then had a press conference. There was some media coverage around the recommendations. They were also published on the Housing and Affordability Task Force Engage website, which has been regularly updated with information about the process that we've been following. And so the recommendations have been public since May 4th and, you know, kind of ahead of the usual time for a publication of a council report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Penner, please.
Thanks. I don't have a lot of questions. The one question I have, and it was raised, you know, as we're looking at this, how do we keep affordable housing affordable? So really, you know, when we look at some of our non-marking, non-market units and some of the state of repair that they're in, you know, how, did the task force contemplate that? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, thanks for the question, Counsel Penner. I would say that, you know, on the broad scale, you'll notice that the recommendations speak to a larger target for non-market housing than for market housing, and that was quite deliberate because the scale of the challenge around non-market housing is larger. And so any kind of effort to address the housing crisis that we're in is a mix of adding market housing and adding non-market housing. The task force certainly heard about the challenges around existing, existing homes that people are living in that providers need maintenance funding for. That has actually been a longstanding practice of the city in terms of we regularly fund homes that we own and are responsible for through the four-year budget cycles, and it's also been a longstanding advocacy principle of the city. And so you won't necessarily see it in the Housing and Affordability Task Force recommendations, but it is not something that we are going to let up on in terms of our advocacy to the other orders of government for that maintenance funding.
Great, thanks. That was actually the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Spencer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Curious about how this work compares to other regions that are tackling this issue and kind of give us a sense of where are we at on the continuum? When you compare this work, is this leading edge? We catching up? Where are we at right now across the country?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Spencer. One of the contributors to the task force that we heard from was actually a professor from the University of Ottawa, Carolyn Witzman, who presented us with a package of things that can be done and are being done throughout Canada as best practices. And so I think based on kind of her work, and there's a letter from her in the, in the package that speaks to her support for the recommendations, based on what she has done in her work across the country, I think we're close in terms of what the best practices are. There are, across the task force, we looked at best practices from other jurisdictions. Some of the examples came from, for example, Victoria, B.C., Cambridge, Massachusetts, Vienna in Austria. We looked far and wide in terms of where are the best practices and tried to put them together in a comprehensive package. So I think they are reasonably close. I haven't necessarily seen something that is as comprehensive as this, but they are guided by best practice and they're guided by experts.
I appreciate that, especially when we're trying to protect affordability here, to know that we're trying to get out ahead of it as much as possible, that's comforting to me. A bit of a risk, going back to parking, I wanted to, if I could, just, I know that this is going to be an issue when it comes time to actually execute on, particularly the parking minimums, obviously, the zoning is going to be contentious. What is our parking reality in this city? What are we dealing with when it comes to established neighborhoods? And it'd be a similar question. How do we, how do we, how do we shape up against other jurisdictions?
Yeah, before I hand over to the two directors standing next to me, I think I would emphasize that this does not, that the recommendation does not take away parking. And certainly, you know, this removes a barrier as organizations are developing housing, but we don't expect that parking would go away as a result of this recommendation. Developers as they're developing will need to, will likely need to provide some level of parking. What this does is it provides flexibility to reduce costs, particularly for non-market housing developers. And so that's the reason and the intent behind the recommendation. I'll let Director White speak to some of the realities across the city.
Sure, appreciate that. If clerks could pull up supplementary slide nine, please. And so certainly, I think there's a lot of Calgarians that feel very strongly about parking and parking availability, and certainly, in a lot of acute instances, people feel like there's a lack of abundance or there's congestion in parking. And in those situations, we often deploy some of those tools around parking zones and time-limited parking to help manage that supply. So what you see on the screen here is a figure-ground image of West Hillhurst, and the red indicates the spaces within the community that are dedicated to car parking. So what's available for residential parking? So this is a community that has seen historically a lot of infill through RC2 redevelopment, as well as has been on a bit of the leading edge in terms of developer-led applications for RCG. So a pretty high rate of turnover. So on a typical block here, you have about 36 to 38 dwelling units on a full block, and amongst those, you have between the parking spaces that are private on off-street lands, as well as the public on-street space, there's about enough parking for 140 vehicles. So there's about a ratio of about three point, there's enough space for about 3.5 cars per dwelling unit in this community across. So roughly about 1,000 units in this picture and over 3,600 parking spaces both on and off-street. So we feel that there's a relative abundance. If every single person in this picture did not park in their garage, and we took the average number of cars per dwelling unit across Calgary, there would still be enough space on-street to facilitate every single vehicle.
That seems, seems like we're doing okay. I'm curious, is part of this because we've had such an overabundance of street parking for years and years in this city just because of how we've built and patterns in the past?
No, I think these are, this is a community that started as single detached and has slowly been subdivided over time, and the typical allocation of off-street parking is about two per unit in this form, whether it's a duplex or a single. And so that, that formulates the amount of off-street space there is. The benefit of a, of a development pattern like this is that there's, there's not a lot of front drives, except for in the far right of that image. That's a pocket of development where there's a lot of front drive, and so there's a little bit less on-street space. But the benefit of this rear, rear-loaded community with lanes is that there's almost uninterrupted on-street parking space in front. And these are the types of locations where you tend to see the most amount of infill because the parcels are most conducive to that type of infill. Those regular 50-foot-wide lots with lanes is, are the conditions that are in place where you see the most infill development.
Okay. So, yeah, so while the, the amount of parking is high, maybe there's a little bit of instability just in terms of, with increased density, you have more propensity to be impacted by a party or something of this nature. But when it comes right down to it, anybody that needs a parking spot somewhat close to their home should be able to find it, just maybe not right up front.
Yeah, and if we do start to see, if there's a driver of parking demand, and that's where we see those measures put in place to help control that through, as you said, parking districts and zones or time-limited on-street parking, and that can help manage that congestion in those acute places where it does occur, and it does occur.
Well, thank you for this. I think this kind of analysis is important as we head towards bringing this recommendation forward, so appreciate your work on it. No further questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Wong, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ward. Also, thank you to the task force who put this together. There's obviously a lot of good thought that's been put in here, but once again, the task force's recommendations are recommendations and not council policies, and this is, I think, the first time the public's really got a chance to weigh into it. So I'm gonna just, I got a whole host of questions, but I'm gonna just go through from recommendation one onwards. In recommendation one, you make reference to, again, RCG as a minimum low residential. By that, again, doesn't mean everything's going to be RCG. It could be RC1, RC2, RCGs, but in doing that, that change negates or takes away the public hearing process. In other words, if somebody wants to go from RC1 to an RC2, there is no public hearing process once we do the planning zone. Is that correct?
So if the recommendations today were approved, and if then council made that subsequent decision after the public hearing to do that city-initiated rezoning, after that, so say that all went forward, and that's a big if, if it did go forward, then the parcels would be zoned RCG. And so what that would do is that would provide the landowners with the opportunity to develop to different levels of density. And so it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. It doesn't mean that it's going to happen to that level that RCG allows. But, you know, fundamentally, yes, there would no longer be those, you know, kind of land use amendments that wouldn't be from RC1 to RC2, for example. That would not happen because the city-initiated rezoning had happened.
Okay. The second part of that, then, is that at a development permit stage, the community-adjacent neighbors have an opportunity to write a written submission, but there's, again, no deliberation on that. It's just a submission, correct?
I will let my colleague speak to that.
Hi, Counsel Wong. Yes, you're correct. Through the development permit process, whether it be permitted or discretionary, discretionary, obviously, there's, there's the opportunity to comment.
Okay.
Permitted, not so much.
Okay. So I guess the concern that we've heard through constituents since May 4th is, where does the public have an opportunity to weigh in when, you know, when somebody wants to change a housing form in there? Other than the DP, there's really no other form once we approve the minimums RCG. So I think you've answered that. Thank you. The other question then I'm gonna have is on recommendation number two, and that's to make available surplus lands for housing. Perhaps I can ask Mr. Berry to join us on this one. Mr. Berry, two, three months ago, you provided a report on surplus lands or lands available for housing. Can you just reiterate the final recommendation of there?
Sure. Thanks for the question. Campbell Berry, Director of Real Estate and Development Services. We have presented to council reports, multiple reports, saying that we have used surplus lands for affordable housing through the non-market land sale program. It's been, in many ways, a successful program, and I just want to give you some numbers before I get into the, into the answer. The, the program was started in 2018, and since that time, we've identified 24 sites for affordable housing. The issue is becoming that those are shovel-ready sites, ready to go. Now we're into a process where we're finding it more challenging to find shovel-ready sites. We do feel that there's a number of sites that could be brought online, and there's more opportunities for affordable housing, and that's outlined in recommendation two C. But some effort and funding is going to have to go into those sites to make them shovel-ready.
Those sites, are they zoned for housing?
A variety of zoning on those various sites, so that is part of making it shovel-ready. I mean, we want to provide sites to the non-market housing land sale program that are zoned for housing, so we would be looking at city-initiated land use designation for those sites. That's part of the complexity of them and part of the cost associated with them.
Okay. The other question is, in the report, there is talking about two, three bedrooms. This is about equity, two, three bedrooms, and also a bit of lack of definition TOD. What's the strategy around two, three bedroom and TOD developments?
From a, from an affordable housing point of view, in terms of the levers that we use to create non-market housing, that is something that we are looking at very closely in terms of where before we have focused on the creation of homes without thinking about bedroom, bedroom sizes or bedroom, number of bedrooms, really thinking about how, where we're providing funding or we're providing opportunities for affordable housing development, going a little bit more in-depth and saying, these, this is the type of housing that we need, and so therefore, this is the type of housing that we expect providers to create. So you'll see that work most likely in the affordable housing strategy. I would say for Indigenous people living in Calgary and equity-deserving populations, probably extends beyond bedroom size, bedroom types and bedroom sizes, and actually thinks about potential ceremonial space or other building typologies, multi-generational housing. There's a lot of considerations that we need to make, and that work is being done right now.
Okay. I was thinking more the equity-deserving population, newcomers, immigrants that are multi-generational, intergenerational housing where they won't lead to two, three bedrooms. Okay. The next question's around density targets. Do we have density targets for housing?
I'll ask Mr. White to come to the podium.
Can I ask you to repeat, please?
In the, I'm gonna, in the Housing Task Force, did we establish density targets?
Not density targets. We, we applied targets for an increase in housing production. So on the, on the market side, we targeted an additional 1,000 units than we would otherwise see if these actions were not taken, and that's in line with CMHC's recommendations for what's required for the, to provide an adequate supply of housing for market, and then, as the introduction said, a minimum of at least 3,000 non-market units per year over the next time period, but no minimum densities. The minimum, the densities we're targeting are, are meant to be in alignment with our municipal development plan targets.
Okay. So in here, we have no differentiation in density in inner-city versus suburban versus greenfield areas?
Yeah, we have density targets in the MDP specific to activity centers and corridors. And so we have a, we have, so for example, community activity centers, neighborhood activity centers, and major activity centers have, have various density targets as well as urban corridors. And so some of the actions around transit-oriented development, disposing of lands to achieve higher-density development around transit, which will include non-market and market housing, is meant to align with those higher-intensity targets. Across the general low-density residential area, our goal is to gradually increase that intensity over time and recapture population. That's our stated goals within the municipal development plan.
Okay.
Across the established area, we're currently, we're 107,000 fewer people than the collective peak populations of our established community. And so through actions like missing middle housing and infill, we would hope within about 15 to 20 years, we can get back to zero, more or less, in terms of peak population, and so that's our goal.
Okay. There's a table in another report that talks about housing for, single-family housing, for TODs housing, and it looks like predominant housing units are single-family conversions as opposed to TODs. Is that the strategy here?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
There's a table, I can't remember if it's in the Indigenous Housing Report or the Housing Accelerator Report, but there's a table that says, so much housing for single-family, so much housing TOD, so much, but the predominance of housing was in a single-family conversions. Is that the strategy?
So that is a, I think that's a question about the Housing Accelerator Fund. Happy to answer that, but I think we would need to go in camera to discuss the details of the action plan.
Okay. Correlated back to the Housing Affordability Task Force, is that distribution the same according to Task Force recommendation?
There has been a lot of effort to make sure that the recommendations in the Housing Accelerator Fund are aligned with the recommendations in the task force. So yes, that effort has been put in there. Once the action plan is submitted to CMHC for the Housing Accelerator, there is still time after that to finesse it, and I would say that the accelerator is the vehicle that helps us do some of the unlocking that can help achieve some of the... that can help achieve some of the, or support some of the redevelopment that may happen if the recommendations got passed.
Okay. My five seconds last question, and that is, item a, non-market affordable housing as defined by the city. Is that published?
It is. It's in the corporate affordable housing strategy. Generally, we, so, when we are providing funding for non-market housing, we expect that to be rented to people that are earning under 65%, under $65,000 or under 65% of the median income, and that are currently paying more than 30% of their income on rent. So, if a unit is targeting a household that fits into that category, that's when we would consider it non-market housing.
Okay, thank you. I'll save for debate later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Walcott, please.
Thank you so much. Love that the conversation really hasn't breached into the non-market space and the questioning of the recommendations in the non-market space, so that's a positive, go affordable housing. Big focus today is on the RCG district, so I think this will likely go towards Josh and Deb, but I know you have additional information prepared. Can you walk me through the research? We're talking about affordability and how the RCG district supply, like, there's a lot of data behind the decision to make that recommendation and how it'll impact affordability over decades. So, I was wondering if you could walk me through some of those decisions, specifically on how housing form impacts long-term affordability?
Please, thank you. I'm just gonna ask clerks to pull up supplementary slide one, please, and then maybe scroll to number two when I prompt. So, this, this shows the individual effect of a change from a single-detached home, an older single-detached home, to different types of housing within our established area. And so, this is based on median housing value of new construction within our established area. So, when a, when an older unit is replaced from a single, it remains a single with a new single, the median price of that unit, so there's no net gain in supply, that median price is $1.64 million for a new home. For a long time in our city, we've had RC2 redesignations, so since about the 80s, and it's been very successful. City-initiated rezoning, we've lowered the cost and barrier and process to build duplexes, and we've produced a lot of duplexes. But, as new duplexes are coming in, semi-detached homes, they're, currently, their median price over the last five years is over $900,000 to purchase those homes. When we replace a single-detached home with a row house, so in this instance, it'd be four principal dwelling units and sometimes secondary suites, you are gaining three net units in supply for the principal dwelling unit, and again, sometimes secondary suites as well, so potentially up to a net gain of seven units. And the replacement cost there is almost one-for-one what the median price was pre-construction. So, you're gaining three units, and the median price in the established area is $586,000. It's important to keep in mind as well that, as I alluded to in the last slide, the leading edge of a lot of these developments are happening in communities like Hillhurst and West Hillhurst and Capitol Hill and Altador. As we expand this program, we would expect that median price to drop as there's more supply coming onboard. So, that's the individual effect in terms of maintaining an affordability. The collective effect, I think, is really important as well. So, the, all the research indicates, and it's intuitive from just a supply-demand point of view, that increasing supply means that the same number of people are competing for more units, which reduces scarcity and puts downward pressure on prices. And so, the experience, among other cities that have done this, of something very similar, is that they've seen real reduction in prices and rents. So, the best example globally that's analogous is Auckland. And over a five-year period, they've produced 20,000 residential units as a result of exactly this type of rezoning with very similar type of rules for triplexes. And the research shows that that's reduced prices between, it's 14% to 35% less than what it would have been had they not done that. So, there's an individual effect of enabling supply that's more close to people's level of affordability when homes are replaced, and homes are replaced. And so, that's the individual effect, and then there's the collective effect of drastically increasing the amount of available supply in the housing market.
Can you run me through the concept of the different life-cycling stages as well? Knowing that a lot of the pressure, the downward pressure that's happened, or the pressure that's happened redevelopment-wise has been in the interior, inner-city, but then, as you work your way out, the different communities are at different life cycles, and so, how will that impact this process as well?
Yeah, so, what we've seen, I think, in front of this council, we've seen that population curve over time. There's usually a dramatic increase during the build-out of the community, and as that community starts, and there's a lot of family formation, in other words, a lot of children in that community, and then typically, over time, that population declines and stabilizes, and then eventually, when homes are ready for redevelopment, that population can recover. But, it's only recovering in communities where enabling this type of intensification. So, for example, in RC2 communities, we've seen population recovery, and we've seen population recovery at a higher rate amongst youths than the overall population. In RC1 communities, we've seen a continued decline of that population and an even larger decline in the proportion of people that are youths. So, that has a lot of impacts in terms of community lifecycle. So, impacts around school closures, and so, the school boards look very closely at the demographic trends and where those are going. And so, we see a lot of pressure on school closures in those areas that have lost population generally, but specifically where you've lost population amongst under-18 populations.
Can you, can you talk about the climate impacts of what we're doing here as well?
I'll just ask clerks to pull up a slide, a supplementary slide five. Yeah, so, I think, I think a main point is that new dwelling units generally are far more energy-efficient than old ones. So, as housing stock replenishes, there's a positive impact on climate emissions. The second effect is that, is transportation. And so, the effect of unaffordability within the established area, as it was alluded to originally in the presentation, is that people tend to drive until they qualify. That's the term. They move further and further out until which point they can afford the housing choice they're seeking. And so, that has an impact on increasing net emissions through transportation. One-for-one, the dwelling units are gonna be pretty similar. A single's very similar to a single in a new community, in the established community. A row house certainly has lower emissions per capita, just because of the size of their dwelling unit, shared walls, that kind of thing. But, the main impact is being able to ensure people can live in locations where there's more mobility choice that allows them to reduce reductions. That includes transit, of course, walking and cycling.
When we, sorry, I'm asking my questions quickly because of my time. When we think about all the different factors that come into development, a lot of the conversation here around the idea of city-initiated rezoning is, you know, it'll happen everywhere all the time immediately. What are, what are some of, like, the probability and the factors that will likely be determined through both just economic market factors, but then also development permit factors as well, too, in, when considering redevelopment?
Sure. I'll ask council to pull up another supplementary slide, and that is 10. So, I alluded to this before. There's a number of characteristics that determine the likelihood in which a property will redevelop. A principal one is land value. If a property is of very high value, there's a very high-value house, it's very unlikely that it will be removed and replaced with another dwelling unit. That ties very closely to the home quality piece as well. Parcel shape characteristics are also really important. So, regular parcel shapes that are over 44 feet are far more likely to subdivide than irregular parcels, say a pie-shaped lot. And that ties, again, very closely to the parcel characteristic of lane access. We also see a much higher likelihood if the property has lane access because it's easier to develop than if you have to access off the front. And then, there's also drivers of demand, and that's principally around proximity. Downtown proximity is a big driver of that likelihood of demand, as well as proximity to other employment centers, as well as public transit. Clerks, go to the next slide. And so, the overall likelihood of, in the established area or the inner-city, of any given parcel turning over in a year is about 1%. We see about 1% turnover rate, but it's largely on parcels of those that exhibit those characteristics. So, on the high, on the high-end case, Killarney, that's a, that's an older, pre-1960, well, very old community on a grid with a regular 50-foot lot configuration with lanes close to downtown. It's one of those areas that's most attractive to see this type of redevelopment, and that has been our experience. On the other end of the spectrum, two cases. Upper Mall Royal is a good example where it is a very old community, but its land and home quality is extremely high. It also has unusual lot shapes, and it doesn't have the characteristics. There's very good reason why we have not seen developer builder-initiated rezonings for RCG in these neighborhoods. It's very rare that someone would tear down a $3 or $4 million property to build this type of product. Similarly, in post-war suburbs further out, Citadel is the example here, where it doesn't exhibit a lot of the characteristics that make it likely that you would see a lot of redevelopment. It's not to say it can't happen, but it's less likely, at least now. So, these are, you know, 1990s communities. They exhibit characteristics like pie lot shapes, it's almost exclusively front-access driveway, it's relatively far from demand drivers like downtown. Again, even with a rezoning, it'll take a long period of time before we start to see a high rate of turnover in these communities. But, I think the benefit of this proposal is that even though the impact or the effect locally on any given street is low, even at 1%, on a typical 30-block unit, you're about to, you're likely to see one redevelopment every three years. So, low impact at the local scale, but because it's so widespread, the aggregate impact, the collective impact in terms of the overall housing supply is big. And that's what's, I think, attractive and beneficial about this proposal, is it unfetters the market and allows it to emerge and provide a pretty high degree of supply of relatively affordable housing.
I want to jump to jurisdictional challenges, right? And one of the part, main parts of the notice of motion was to really focus on what is both within our jurisdiction, what's advocacy-based, what is within our capacity, and so on, and it, thank you, by the way. And it very, it was very specifically wanted to make sure that this is impacting the municipal regulatory measures, including things that are impactful municipally here. So, I was wondering if you can talk about how that process played out in the task force of trying to make sure that the solutions that are being brought forward are really about what the city can do?
Thank you for the question, councillor Walcott. I would say that we, you know, I think we started from a point of view that particularly around non-market housing, the primary responsibility for funding, for funding that is the federal and provincial government. And so, you know, what we focused on in the task force was more around things that the city can do to leverage and bring investment into Calgary and to make the conditions right for that to happen, and really focus on what the city can do. There are advocacy recommendations in the, in the, in the task force recommendations, and they were primarily things that we, that were seen to be important and seen to be things that we hadn't necessarily advocated for in the past. I alluded to it earlier, but the city has had some longstanding advocacy positions related to non-market housing that speak to the need for sustained and expanded capital investment from the federal and provincial governments for new construction and for maintenance, amongst others. And so, those, those stay in place, and we may bring an update to them, but they are longstanding and things that we have been advocating for, for quite some time.
When you look across jurisdictions in Canada in particular, at provincial and federal governments, what is the environment of pressure onto some of the work that we're seeing suggested through these recommendations?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you, councillor Walcott.
What is the, when you're looking at doing the jurisdictional scan across the different orders of government within Canada, and you're looking at the different pressures that are being placed upon municipalities, I'm wondering if you can speak to kind of what we're seeing between feds, provinces, and other municipalities doing this work?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, I would say it is absolutely a spectrum depending on the province. Our focus has been, to be honest, much more focused on what other municipalities across Canada and actually across North America are doing in terms of housing, recognizing that they each have their own federal and provincial jurisdiction that is in place. I think, you know, if I think about federally, you know, we have a very active and involved federal government, and you'll hear more about that in the Housing Accelerator Report. Some of that funding, though, you know, I think from our position, would need to be more targeted at non-market housing and be less kind of loan-based, for example. And then, across the provinces, there's just a very wide spectrum.
And then, this one is for Campbell, it's on surplus sites. When, when we identify surplus sites for affordable housing, mostly it's just sites that don't really fit into any other particular business unit's current business plan. In your enhanced rationalization, as we go through this work, have you started to gather up the numbers on how many sites in the city have significant housing opportunities but are currently encumbered?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. This kind of comes up in Action, Recommendation Two, Action C, looking at, you know, shovel-ready sites or how we can make shovel-ready sites. We've done an additional scan since the work of the task force, and we have identified just in excess of 50 additional sites that we can look at for affordable or non-market housing, rather. The challenge is that they're not surplus. There are currently other uses on those sites, whether it be parking or open space or recreation facilities, not, not buildings, but opportunities. So, we have in excess of 50 sites that we are now currently investigating to see if we can reposition them as surplus sites.
And, you know what? I'll hold the rest for debate, keying in on time. Appreciate you. Right?
Thank you. Councillor Chabot, please.
Thank you. As part of the recommendations, some of which are included in the subsequent report on Housing Accelerator, and there's some that are interlinked, was, there a lot of thought put into whether or not we would be able to move forward with any applications on the accelerator prior to approval for some of these recommendations in this Housing Affordability Task Force?
There was, yes. Thanks for the question, councillor Chabot. So, you know, I think the first thing to say is that the Housing Accelerator Fund is an opportunity for us to access federal funds and move forward with some of the recommendations that are in the task force. If there was a situation whereby there are actions in the task force recommendations and actions in the Housing Accelerator Action Plan, we would be able to remove those actions from the Housing Accelerator Action Plan. We have more initiatives than are required by the federal government, and so, we would adjust and adapt the action plan based on council's direction and will.
Yeah, because some of those are directly linked. If one doesn't get approved, they'd be pointless to apply for the other. So, a question that came up recently was in regards to some of the older area structure plans, older but maybe not built out, and even some of the newer area structure plans where we don't have RGs, where we have still R1s and R2s and whatnot. Wouldn't this conversion to RCG further incentivize that greenfield-type development where land is cheaper rather than redevelopment in the inner-city where land is expensive?
I'd maybe ask Mr. White just to come to the podium.
Yeah, so, so, just to level set, RG, all new greenfields have RG as a general district. So, RG is a very similar district to RCG in that it allows single semis and row houses within a single residential district. And so, all new communities post-2014 have that zoning in place. But, you're correct, there are a number of older ASPs that are in But you're correct, there are a number of older ASPs that are in build-out, and what we would propose here as part of this recommendation is that all those are districts would convert to RCG, in that to create a level playing field across the entire city from a regulatory standpoint. That's really what the thrust of this recommendation is. For quite a while, it's been a lot easier to build a variety of housing forms within new communities. In the RG district, the reason why it was put in is it allows the market to sort of more organically respond to different demand that emerges. So, if a developer sees that there's emerging demand for a higher proportion of row houses, there's no regulatory barrier for them to do that. They could go straight to building permit, and that's been a really positive change. What this does is allow that to happen for the rest of the city, in fact, that it doesn't prohibit those forms. And I think it's important to point out that the C in the RCG is contextual. So, we have a series of rules in place to ensure that there's contextual sensitivity, so that there's rules that drive how big the setback can be compared to its neighbors, what the heights are, so it has compatibility with the context of a low-density community. And what this RCG district allows is those rules that guide that in a contextual manner, but most importantly, reduce the regulatory barrier for the market to be able to respond to those different housing demands that might emerge as we go. And what we're seeing is an increasing demand for that type of housing because of its level of affordability relative to other forms.
It's interesting you should bring the point about contextual, because my understanding is that that rule from a percentage of the neighboring property versus a 11-meter structure next to it, that those rules on percentage of height comparisons haven't been uniformly applied. Is that a false interpretation?
I don't know the answer. I might ask maybe Ms. Khan to speak to some of the specifics of the district. Maybe you don't mind repeating it as she's walking out?
Yeah, from a contextual perspective, if you have, you know, a single-story bungalow and you want to build a two-story 11-meter structure next to it, would that be permitted?
There are contextual rules that make it so that depending on the height of the neighboring parcel, your parcel can't go up to the maximum. So, if your parcel beside you is lower, it impacts what you can develop next to it. Over time, as we see the block transition out, you'll see that height get higher because everything will start to be more and more contextual to it.
Yeah, it's hard to apply because you have some sporadic builds, and then you can cite percentage numbers of a higher build on a given block.
To be honest, we apply it through every development permit, and we can show you some pictures, too. To be honest, there's not that much of a difference when you're looking at it over time.
And that's you, and that's you, and then council is a whole nother story, right?
Pardon?
Council's a whole nother story as far as what gets approved and not approved. So, whilst you may apply-
Through the development permit, we would approve that, right? The development permit would come through our process, we would go through the review, obviously through the by-law check, making sure everything meets the rules, and then we go through our process of either approval or refusal.
From the land use. No, I'm looking just from the land use perspective. Now, insofar as current rules around RCG, we typically would look at things like transit and other things in close proximity. If we blanket-zone the city with this approval, those requirements are no longer into play, right? You could build something out in the middle of nowhere that has no connectivity to transit or amenities.
Currently, when we look at RCG, we look at a number of different things. So, we look at the merits of the site, the context of location, all relevant policy, et cetera. For the most part, RCGs are mostly compatible with low-density residential development. And so, as such, when they meet the rules and they look and feel like something that belongs in that community, we look at that as a positive. I do want to mention that our rules in RCG, the way we measure stuff in RCG is different than how we measure height and, sorry, I believe it's just height, in RC1 and RC2. So, our RCG rules actually provide a better way of measuring it so that it is more contextual to the neighboring parcel. Director Hamilton just pointed out, I believe it's slide 15 of 34, if we can go to that slide.
It seems an opportune time to talk about that question of compatibility, because it is the undercurrent of what we hear a lot from your questions, what we hear for development permit processes and through community feedback. And so, wanted to just walk through, I decided to jump on my bike in my neighborhood a couple weeks ago and take some photographs of what we're actually talking about here, because I think it's important to perhaps demystify what this is actually about and what the characteristics of compatibility are in community character. So, what we really are talking about here is homes. They're homes that are slightly more intense and more low-rise. But in our view, as Ms. Khan said, we believe they're fundamentally compatible to the built form of all residential communities in Calgary. As clerks, I might ask you to walk through a couple of times. There's two steps to each slide, so if you go to the next slide. So, this is a typical infill residential street within the community of Mount Pleasant in Ward 7, I'll point out, a community where you've seen a high degree of RC2 infill of duplex as well as RCG. And if you click once, it'll demonstrate that the form and height and scale and compatibility of an RC2, which in this instance is sidelighting onto the street, and RCG is quite similar, in fact. Next slide. And again, if you click through one more time, an example of RCG as homes fitting into the community. They are low-rise, low-scale, and fundamentally more similar than different than the forms that are around them. Next slide. And so, here's another example of one unit in lauding and then turning the corner other homes facing the street. This is 24th Avenue Northwest. And so, if you click one more time, you see that the scale, the height, the form of the RCG is similar, if not identical, to the RC2 districts around it. Highly compatible. Next slide. Similarly, if you look at communities front-on mid-block, if you click through one more time, you can see that on the left, you have an RCG form, the two end units. In this instance, it's a seven-unit RCG development that wraps the corner. But as it meets its neighboring properties, it's of the same height, scale, character of the homes around it, and it's a large part to do with those contextual rules that we have. Next. And so, what we often hear about community change is there's a change in scale from old to new. But that's also been true throughout the entire evolution of infill development in Calgary. As we rezoned large portions of the inner city to RC2, you see the scale of a transition. So, if you click one more time, you can see on the left is a very typical new RC2 duplex. It's of a bigger scale than the RC2-zoned, single, original home. So, there is, over time, a transition in scale. That has been true for the last 40 years, and it wouldn't change as a result of this proposed action. Next. We also see that it's not just duplexes that have the scale of change. Actually, the highest percentage of housing replacement is from single to single. Over the last 20 years, approximately 20% of the homes that have turned over have gone from RC1 to RC1. About 11% in RC2 have gone from single to duplex. So, in terms of volume, the most replacement of housing that we see, even in RC1 and RC2 districts, is from old single to new single. So, if you click the slide, both homes are singles. And so, for the average person, even though the rules are slightly different, perhaps, if you're standing on the street, a new single that's large, its massing, its scale, its character, is very, very similar to what you'd see if this were an RCG rowhouse development. It's just a large single. And so, this is the type of character change that happens over time. And next slide. And so, we hear a lot of people go, well, a lot of the concern with infill is that the scale of its massing is bigger, the back of the house overhangs my backyard. There's a difference between the original housing stock and the new housing stock, and that's very true. But if you click again, that's also true of singles going to singles. That's, both are single detached homes, in this instance, the community of Briar Hill, near my home. And so, that scale and transition is similar. And then, the last RC1 example, similarly, pocket, if you go to the next slide, pocket of West Hillhurst, if you click through again, the single that's being replaced by a single is larger contextually than what's happening. You see that transition in scale. That's the evolution of community character over time. And then, if you go to the final slide of this deck, again, RCG, is this materially different in terms of scale and form and compatibility to all those other pictures I showed? We think not, and that's why we think it's fundamentally compatible as communities begin to transition. The benefit of this, of course, is that these are worth $585,000, not 1.6 million, like a lot of those pictures I described before, and that will improve the affordability, which is the mandate of this committee.
Okay, sorry, you actually touched on my next question. The 1.6 million, you're referring to redevelopment of a single family in the developed area, right?
Within the established area, yeah.
Within the established, not in Greenfield?
No, absolutely not. Of course, new single, actually, all forms of housing in Greenfield are less expensive than their counterparts within new communities or within the established area.
So, therein lies the question, are we creating affordable rentals or affordable ownership? Because my home is not worth 585,000.
Yeah. As I mentioned, that's a reflection of where these types of developments are happening today. I think as we expand this program to different communities of different economic and like different home prices, that I think there will be downward pressure on that price if we can expand those communities. So, for example, a duplex in West Hillhurst is certainly more than a duplex in Montgomery. A rowhouse in West Hillhurst is more costly than one in Montgomery as well. And so, as we can expand this and make it universal, we can put downward pressure on that price, so communities all across Calgary can see this shift, this evolution.
Yeah, I'm concerned that we're creating affordable rentals and not providing an opportunity for people to actually develop equity, which is more appropriately gotten in existing, established areas like my community, which is way more affordable than any of these units. I do have an amendment I'd like to propose for recommendation number one, at whatever point is appropriate.
I'll come to you when it's time for the amendment, Counselor Chabot. Thank you for the heads-up. We are approaching our break time. Madam Clerk, we need to go to another item after the break. Do we need another motion to postpone this to the call of the chair?
Yes, please, Mayor Condeck.
All right, if you wouldn't mind popping it up there.
Sure.
Can I get a mover for it? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Walcott. All we're doing is the same thing we did last time, everybody, where we're going to pause this item. We will take our half-hour break. 3:45, we'll come back in here, we'll move to here 9.3.
9.3.2 Indian Residential School Permanent Memorial Project update.
That's right, perfect. And then, after that item, we'll go back to this one. So, this one's been moved and seconded. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, that is carried, that takes us to our break. We'll see you at 3:45. Counsel, we will go back to item 9.3.1, which is the Housing and Affordability Task Force Recommendations. I believe Counselor Chabot had wrapped his questions, Counselor Karah has withdrawn his. So, we're on to Counselor Meehan.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you so much, everyone, for the presentation today. It's been interesting to listen to all of the comments and questions so far. One of the things that I noted in the report is that you have three different timelines, now, next, and later, and later is in three years from now, and I don't even think you actually used that anywhere in the report. So, everything needs to happen now or next. And so, that leads to my question just about, you know, like, have we done any projections on like what we think will happen to affordability in a case where we implement these recommendations and in a case where we don't? Is that something we've looked at?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Meehan. In terms of kind of direct impact analysis on the specific recommendations, not specifically, I mean, particularly around the non-market housing side of things, we know that we have a significant supply deficit, and so, setting the target of 3,000 non-market units per year, we know that that would have a significant impact on the housing need that we have. We have a goal to get to 15,000 units just to get to comparable with other cities in Canada, and so, if we were able to get to a level of 3,000 units per year, we know that that would have a significant impact on the housing need that we see in the city.
Thanks for that. You're actually going right where my next question is, which was really just to dig into those targets a little bit more. And so, I think you've sort of alluded to it, which is that like the 3,000 is what we think we need to do. I guess my question is, is what's proposed here actually able to get us there, or is that just sort of what we need to do?
One of the things that we heard is the importance of really setting out a clear direction of where we need to go, particularly on the non-market housing side of things. And so, it is undoubtedly a significantly stretching goal to get to 3,000 units per year. You know, I won't sugarcoat how challenging that would be to get there. And it, of course, relies on provincial and federal funding to help us get there. But I think the biggest thing that the task force considered is the way to bring those governments to the table is by demonstrating ambition and by demonstrating what is needed in our community. And certainly, the conversations that I've had with counterparts at the provincial government, you know, I think, show how the value of that target is. It gives them something they can respond to and something that they can react to and try and help us to achieve.
Yeah, thanks for that. I've certainly read all the letters from the different non-market providers about how important they think having a target is. I think I'll be really curious to see the reports back as to how this is going, because, you know, the last thing we want is governments often set targets they don't meet, and I just really want us to be able to meet these particular targets, and that's why I'm asking a little bit more about, you know, can we? And I know that capacity is just such a challenge on that non-market side, so, okay. I'll leave that there, unless there's anything else more you want to add about it.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, okay. Going over the market side, like, the market side number is significantly less. Can you just tell us about how you came to that number? Do you feel like the, some of the deregulation measures that are proposed in here would be enough to get to that? And do you think that that's a much easier, I'm assuming it's an easier target to make, but maybe I'm wrong?
Yes, Director White actually referenced it earlier in terms of those numbers are the 1,000 units more than we typically build alone are based on the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, CMHC, estimates of what is needed to help us maintain our affordability. And so, that is what drives the 1,000-unit number, and certainly, the task force is confident that the recommendations would absolutely help the market get there. I'd also say there's a big component of the Housing Accelerator Fund as well that plays into it, and that would be a big start in helping us meet and possibly exceed some of those targets.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I wanted to dig a little bit more into that. I think my final question is, like, we inevitably, I think, a lot of the conversation of this is going to focus on the market side, on some of the zoning pieces, but is there, like, I see some pieces in here around JUCC and some other things I'm really excited about. Is there anything we haven't talked about today on that non-market side that you think has really great potential that you just want to highlight?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counselor Meehan. I think for sure, and Director Barry mentioned it earlier, in terms of some of the work that is advancing the land side of things, would be tremendously impactful for housing providers. That is one of the things that they regularly share with us that is a huge barrier to advancing development of housing. If we are able to really kind of transform the amount of land that we're able to transfer to housing providers, that would have a hugely significant difference. And some of that work is already happening within Real Estate and Development Services, and I thank them for advancing that conversation outside of some of the other recommendations that have come forward.
Yeah, thanks for that. I certainly have sensed the difference there in terms of how the corporation is thinking about that. So, very exciting, and good luck. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Thaddeus, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Great work, good information, and some of the questions have already been asked. I just want to talk about a little bit about MDP. We had a certain interim target- We had a certain interim target that 30% of all population growth between 2009 and 39 should be in the established communities. We are on trend about 9.7%, 10%. This proposal, and can you comment, doesn't it put that on risk? We will have two counterforces acting, maybe because we allow RCG blanket, there will be RG in newer communities, developing communities that will take away some of that row house or that kind of built in established communities and that will kind of put us at risk and not making, meeting our interim goals.
My planning colleagues might contradict me, but I would say it's actually the opposite. If the recommendations were approved, then implemented and council approved them to move forward, they significantly support us to meet some of those targets that are established in the MDP, so around development and growth in the established areas.
I would concur with that. And just wait for Director White to see whether or not we need to approach actions.
Yeah, I would suggest all the actions in the task force recommendations, both around multifamily housing in terms of transitory development, lowering some of the development costs and barriers to market housing, as well as the RCG will be crucial in hitting MDP targets. One of the things we've seen in the growth plans of a lot of cities that have struggled with affordability is they've relied very, very heavily on nodes and corridors in downtown, which are almost all proportionally apartment dwellings, when we know that there's still and will continue to be, across Canada and not just Calgary, lots of demand for ground-oriented housing. And so the RCG recommendation, the HCO recommendation are centered on being able to provide that supply. And what you see in other markets is when you don't facilitate that ground-oriented housing in communities where people want to live, the ground-oriented housing that is available is extremely scarce. And you see an extreme escalation in prices. That's what you see in Toronto, Vancouver, and many cities. So this is to fulfill that demand that we see. Of course, in terms of our growth target, that will help fulfill that growth target to eventually tip that balance of a split more towards the established community. So it doesn't just require us to build high-density, high-rise development in nodes and corridors or on main streets. It requires us to facilitate the demand that exists throughout communities, especially for ground-oriented housing.
Okay. Just maybe another question is, can you please help me, from statistically significant evidence perspective, how additional housing, I'm more concerned about market housing, will help us, because its supply and demand curve will bring that equilibrium price hopefully down and make it more affordable? Or is it just the supply side of the equation we are concerned about, which is putting more houses in the market?
Yeah, maybe I'll just ask for a supplementary slide. Which one do you think?
Oh, that's okay.
Sorry, now I forgot the question. Sorry, do you mind repeating it again? Well, we were trying to look for slides.
So basically, what we are trying to do here is we are just looking at, I'll brief it, we are looking at the supply side of the equation, which is we put more houses in the market, that will lead to affordability, more units available. But I'm also coming from the price side, that if you put more units in, that will automatically bring the price down. Do you see that happening? Or is it just more options or more stock housing availability?
Yeah, sorry, now that I've regained my train of thought, if you don't mind putting up a slide, supplementary slide 34. So the thing that we have most control over as a municipality is supply. We know that there's demand-side factors that are driving demand, like driving housing prices up. One is certainly interprovincial migration. We've seen our highest rate of interprovincial migration in recent years. We also, we have large quantities of international migration. We also have relative housing affordability that's driving a lot of demand from other places that are unaffordable. So a lot of, a lot of what we can do in terms of housing is on the supply side. We have a lot of levers to pull that can affect the ability to deliver supply. And that has a lot to do with the cost of development, the time to development, risk. All these measures are meant to alleviate those so that housing production can be more unfettered. And so we think from a market side, and all the research shows that the more you can, the more your enabling of supply, the more supply you can produce, the lower the housing cost. This is just a conceptual illustration. We don't know exactly where housing prices are going to go, right? What we do know is that they will be lower than they otherwise would if we don't take these actions, because we'll be able to produce more supply and we'll be able to produce more of the right type of supply that enables affordability in all Calgary neighborhoods. So this is representing, if we act now and act quickly, we can flatten that curve, right? It might be able to go down in actual terms. We don't know for sure. It depends on a lot of macroeconomic factors and those demand-side things. But what we do know is that we have the levers in place on the supply side that can have significant impact on housing cost. I might ask you to pull up, do we have this one? I'll just reference again the CHBA one. Slide number four, please. So the CHBA National does a benchmarking analysis of different municipalities across Canada. And it's factored on three dimensions of ease of development. So it has to do with development costs, regulation, and process. And what we've analyzed is that those jurisdictions, including Calgary, Calgary does relatively well on this, those jurisdictions that CHBA deemed using those benchmarking analysis, where it's easier to build, where we've lowered barriers effectively, there's a, almost a direct correlation to housing affordability. Those jurisdictions whereby it's difficult, costly, lengthy, in order to build that, where the housing supply is constrained, there's also a direct correlation to a higher housing cost. And so you can see, but you can also see here that we're at that tipping point of risk, right? Where if we don't act, if we don't continue to improve in terms of our process, costs, our regulatory barriers, we lose risking that affordability on the market side. We're edging very, very close, having already surpassed a housing cost-to-income ratio of five to one, which is deemed to be extremely unaffordable, according to most definitions. So this is why we want to pull these levers, especially through recommendation one and throughout the recommendations, to lower those regulatory barriers, because we know there's a direct causal effect in the price of housing.
Okay, no, great. My last question is pretty much, so this, in your opinion, is it going to lead to very short-term gains? Or is it going to take time for us to see these effects and us catching up long-term affordability? Because definitely, short-term, I don't think it's, the success is going to be very immediate and imminent.
I think the effect can be very quick, right? There's a lot we can do. The task force suggests that we should make a lot of these changes immediately or very soon. And so I think, A, it's certainly not too late. The time to act is now. That's why I think you're hearing from task force members and administration, a sense of urgency, because we need to act fast. Now, the actual impact, like you said, is gradual in any individual community. The difference will be small at first, certainly noticeable within a decade, but provide a massive change for the next generation.
Okay. I lied, one last question, if you allow me. Why RCG? Did we look at any other innovative way of bringing another stock housing district to kind of use as a lever, lever, sorry? And what will be the maximum unit limit on RCG if it's going into an established area? We have seen four to eight to six. How will we control that?
Yeah, so the, on an individual parcel, it's based on a maximum unit count of four principal dwelling units and four secondary suites if it's, yeah, if it's there. And part of the reason why we've leaned into RCG is because this is a district that we tested out, tried out seven or eight years ago. We've seen relatively good take-up. We've been able to refine the rules to be more effective. The markets responded to it. It's basically achieving what it was set out to do. And so we want to just expand on that success.
Great. Thank you so much. That's all, Mayor.
Counselor Dollywell, if I can just add really quickly, the RCG allows single semis, row houses, the full suite. And I'll just use Thursday's CPC agenda for an example. We have five RCG applications on the agenda and two RC2s. So there's a demand, there's a need.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue for questions, but I have a couple, if I may. Probably for Mr. Ward, Ms. Goldstein, and Ms. Cambetts. There was a comment made, Ms. Cambetts, I think it was you, you talked about the trauma of housing insecurity. Would you mind elaborating on what you mean by that?
Well, what we heard, and what has been my personal experience, is that instability in housing can be especially traumatic for children. We heard from a number of stakeholders, particularly leadership at InfromtheCold, and I was kind of shocked by the stat, having worked in affordable housing for 13 years, was that we had 300 families experiencing homelessness in our city. And, you know, I have two boys. I last night was trying to get them to bed so that I could be here on time, and that did not work out. I think they sensed in me that I was sort of rushing them and that we had to, I had to be somewhere in the morning. And even just that experience of me being harried and stressed, you know, has an impact on children. I'm not a professional in childhood development, but I know the impact that it had, you know, on my family moving here from Bosnia. And, you know, it was very traumatic, not knowing where you're going to sleep, seeing the stress that your parents experience in not sort of understanding, you know, where you're going to sleep that night and whether you're going to have a roof over your head the next day. It's really difficult for children, and we heard that in the conversations that we had, not just with leadership at InfromtheCold and the great work that they do to support families. I hear it every day from my staff who answers phone calls from Calgarians who are looking for affordable housing. You know, we heard it in talking to people that are working full-time and are having a really difficult time affording rent. And all of these things do have a traumatic and trickle-down effect on children. And I think it's kind of fitting today that there are all these little people outside, and I think of that a lot. And I think about, you know, the city that we're building for those kids. I hope that answers your question.
It does, actually, and it raises another question. I believe there's a letter in our package from Centre for Newcomers. Are they finding that there's existing trauma that some newcomers are bringing with them and then they're experiencing this trauma in not being able to find housing?
I mean, some of the Ukrainian families, for example, that we've been talking to, you know, I think they're given about 16 days from the time of arrival to really kind of get themselves oriented. And that's extremely, that's an extremely difficult situation for many families, especially when children are involved. And when you don't know the language, you're trying to navigate, you know, where you're going to not only sleep, but where you're going to go shopping, how you're going to, you know, meet your basic needs. And so, you know, what we hear at Norfolk is that, you know, yes, people are grateful to be here and to be safe, but there's a whole other stress that's sort of added when you do arrive. And you add to that, you know, language barriers and many other barriers faced by new immigrants. And, you know, not having a safe or adequate place to sleep really compounds that issue. So I would imagine, not speaking from the Centre for Newcomers, but I would imagine it's, you know, it's a big, big issue.
This may sound like I'm asking an obvious question, but how often are you hearing from folks that they're choosing between basic human rights, whether they should pay the rent, whether they should put food on the table, whether they should be able to send their kids to school, and whether they should access healthcare? Are these things that go together?
Absolutely. Through the task force, the conversation with having experts come in, having housing providers come in, having support, the support side come in and speak to us, we certainly heard that a lot. The other thing that we talked a lot about at the task force was around the importance of rental housing, so the importance of different tenures in our city and how we are a city that has a lot of homeownership, and that certainly wouldn't change over time, but that the opportunity to move into something that's more affordable, to be able to save, because you're not literally picking between housing and transportation or housing and groceries, allows you to have that bandwidth to even plan for the future. And so it's not like a if or that. It was a conversation about both and how they work together.
And the entire spectrum of housing, which we have to allow people to move along that spectrum. And we really took that lens, that this is about the spectrum of housing supply and that diversity.
So you're coming to us with recommendations that really address the fulsome spectrum or continuum, whatever we want to call it. So it's not just about homeownership versus home rental. It is also about the many other points along the way?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
In your conversations, were you able to connect with Dr. Ron Niebone or anyone from a policy school? What are they saying about the numbers? What are we seeing in terms of people being unhoused?
I mean, we're in a crisis. I don't know, I don't want to be alarmist, but we are in a crisis. One in five households are in need of affordable housing. As I've been on the task force, you know, many people know the work that I do in my circle. People have been asking, you know, what's, what are you doing? What is the city of Calgary going to do about this? I mean, you saw the headlines. And I know people, and I think if you looked around in your circles, you would know those people, too. One of the, one of the things that I learned working at Norfolk Housing, which I actually worked for the City of Calgary before I went to Norfolk Housing, I just fell into it. The first thing I learned was that, you know, none of us are immune. I think COVID highlighted that, that not one of us is immune to a life-changing event. I bet you my parents would probably say the same thing in 1992, that, you know, war would never break out in Bosnia, and it did. And all of a sudden, you know, we're new immigrants, not knowing the language. But I recognized a lot of the folks that we serve are people that we know that are family members. And none of us is immune to that one event that could put us in a precarious position, on a fixed income, and in need of affordable housing.
We also talked a lot about that, we had the future lens a lot when we thought about this housing continuum and how the housing, the housing needs, even in the task force members, so even 10 members and five members of administration, just the conversation that we had was around multi-generational housing, as an example. And many of us, like, we were all from different ages, different parts of our life, experiencing housing very differently, but we all had this idea that, you know, it's going to touch us in some way. And moving away from our neighborhoods that we love today, it does not feel like the right answer. And for many of our neighborhoods, that's what's happening. And so much of the conversation did talk about how do we, how do we balance this, the form inside the housing continuum as well? So it was very, very purposeful that we have those recommendations in there. Tim might be able to talk about Ron Niebone more, if you wanted anything more.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Megonick. We did not speak to Ron Niebone specifically, but on the release of the recommendations, he had some positive comments about, particularly around the regulatory reform. And, you know, he's been very, he's been emphasizing a lot about the impact of regulatory reform, reducing the barriers to housing. reform, reducing the barriers to housing as one of the most critical ways that we can increase the supply of housing and deal with the numbers that we see around the need for affordable housing, but also the numbers around homelessness as well.
And I think I remember in some of the reports that he has released over the last little while, it's 300 new entries into the homeless shelter every month in our city? So let that sink in, everyone. 300 people every month are new entries into the homeless founding, or into the homeless centre. My only other question is for you, Mr. Ward. A number of years ago, 2015, 2016, there was something called the Calgary Housing Affordability Collective, and it submitted recommendations to council, which went nowhere. At that time, were many of these measures recommended? Were ideas like this proposed?
Yes, they were.
But council didn't act?
I would maybe say that, you know, the, I think the emphasis was very heavily on the nonprofit sector volunteer actors to deliver. The difference in emphasis, I would say, between the Housing and Affordability Task Force is that it really asks council to act and to take action and bear the, bear the brunt where the nonprofit sector cannot, but help the nonprofit sector to really grow in its capacity and really move forward.
So seven years ago, council knew it had to act, and it left it to the nonprofit sector?
I would say that over the last seven years, as I've been working in affordable housing in Calgary, Theresa shared a comment earlier around whenever we celebrate economic news, my thinking is just like hers. Where will people live, and where will they live affordably? And over the last nine months, you saw the headlines. I shared some statistics around how rents have gone up and how house prices have gone up. We are only worse now than we were nine months ago when we started our work, and the task force members have felt that pressure. Whenever we see a headline like the ones we shared on the screen, we see and we feel that pressure and see Calgarians looking to us to take action.
Thank you. Well, thank you for everyone's service on the task force, and thank you for making us feel the pressure that you feel every day in the service that you provide, given that we are partners with you. I'm glad that we're feeling that pressure today, too. So thank you for your presentations. I don't have anybody else in the queue. We're going to be moving to the motions and debate now, so thank you. I'll go to councillor, before I go to councillor Walcott to move it, councillor Chabot, I believe you said you wanted to bring an amendment, so I'll put you in the queue after councillor Penner, if that works for you. Okay, councillor Walcott, please go ahead.
Thank you. I've written so many versions of this open that I don't even know what to say, because each one's different. I wrote one about meritocracy. I thought that was timely, thinking about the combination of expertise and lived experience that shaped the task force. I wrote a separate one about reconciliation, anti-racism, and equity, but I was actually afraid that that one wouldn't resonate here. I wrote about numbers. I went with the nerd route and went economics. About rising rents, rising housing costs, eviction rates, increasing core housing need, economic trends, employment trends. And also, I wrote about even how like the failing market regulatory measures will negate any significant investments in the non-market sector. If you do not fix the housing market, the need and pressure on the social sector will increase at such drastic rates that no matter how much you spend, you'll never catch up. I wrote about the environment. I wrote about local area plans. I even wrote about like, the, I wrote about the, the fact that we have this like amazing opportunity in front of us, and if we don't act, I think this is what's really terrifying, is if we don't act, someone will force you to act. Right? Like, we can, we can hide today, and we can not do this, right? And we don't, you can not act, but someone will force you to act, because that's what's happened in every municipality that hasn't acted, that's hit the crisis. When Toronto didn't act, the province forced them to. In B.C., the provincial government has dropped a list of municipalities that say, you're too expensive, figure it out. And if you don't figure it out, we'll come in and we'll strip you of your MGA powers and we'll do it for you. The federal government has tied federal funding toward this to the idea of missing middle housing, to the idea of densifying in your current areas. And the opposition in the federal government has threatened infrastructure dollars if you don't start doing this. And so I wrote about all of it. I even wrote one about the event center. About council values. A whole version on that one and how some of us will use the term virtue signaling. I wonder what virtues that signals, that we will go the route of the event center but balk at these decisions which are completely within our jurisdiction. You know, this crisis is like knocking at our doors. To Director White's point, we have actually surpassed five to one. We are severely unaffordable, because in the last year, we went from an average housing price of $4.81 to, at one point, we were at $5.91. And then the federal government had to raise interest rates to such a point where we could get it down to $5.51, only down to $5.39. We are unaffordable. Frankly, CED's numbers are wrong, because CED did something great. They thought they were showing something dramatic when they talked about how much you would have to make in the city to be able to afford 39% of the housing. They said $89,000. $89,000 to afford 39% of the housing. That number was nice, but it missed something. It missed the reality of that the median household income in this city, so 50% make less than this number, household income, not individual, is $84,000 after tax, which means 50% of the families in this city can't afford 39% of that. And how many more can? Individually, the individual income in this, the median income in this city is $44,000. So 50% of the city makes less than $44,000. So these, these numbers that are being presented by, by CED, there's more to them. I note that, where we didn't really debate throughout the day, so I anticipate more debate now about the actual content, to say, it was mostly process. But I want to say, like, there is an undertone of our, our questions that are less about the recommendations and more about council maintaining the ability to decide who our neighbors are. And that is terrifying. I became a councillor because when I studied in, in all of the work that I did with education, I knew that whatever happened outside of the school had more impact on my students in my classroom. I used to ask my students that were failing the most, they'd be like, how secure is your home life? How secure is your food life? And the number one reason why students fail in school is because their housing, they have housing insecurity outside of school. People ask me, they're like, why did you choose to be a municipal councillor? You know, with all my passions in education, like, why didn't you go provincial? Why didn't you run provincially? And I said, because the solutions rest here, and if we solve them, then I'll move up the ladder. Then we'll start having those conversations, then we'll start focusing. So I look forward to hearing everyone's debate. But the whole purpose of these recommendations is that the power is in council's hands, and I can't wait for us to make a decision.
Thank you. It's been moved. Councillor Spencer, you're seconding, and you have debate.
I'd be happy to second. Yes. Colleagues, when I think about the issue that accessible, all the issues that accessible housing is connected to, it makes this decision easy for me. The stats that were shared today around our housing stock and its availability, the ones that councillor Walcott just went into more detail, that was sobering. It's sobering to think through those numbers in terms of just how much access people in the city have to the housing stock that currently exists. Affordability and housing are inextricably linked. We know affordability is a priority for this council. This is something we bring up continuously from a variety of different angles. It's something that we, we put out into the fore as a priority for this council. Moving this forward is directly attached to our economic, social, climate resilience priorities. In my mind, this really doesn't, it feels like a no-brainer. The task, obviously, there's massive issues where each of us come at this, and I feel a little bit guilty that my ward, the zoning issues are already figured out. I won't lie. I feel guilty a little bit, like I get off scot-free, because there are councillors around this that are going to have a more difficult challenge ahead of them explaining this and talking about this with folks who, who will experience change with, with some of what, where we move forward from this, if it, if it passes. I really appreciate that the task force went into great deal, detail to show us what's possible. As councillor Walcott outlined, there's an awful lot of levers that we can pull to tackle this issue. It's a long list. And while we might be tempted to think that we're out on an edge here, there's, I know there's also a large contingent in the city. I've seen it trickle in through one of my staffers. I would say that these recommendations don't go far enough. So I temper that, and I really look at this and I go, what I, I feel that what I'm looking at today is thoughtful, and it is tempered by the realities that we are facing as a city. The expertise that was brought to bear on this conversation, the depth of the work, the depth of the recommendations, I certainly do not want to stand in the way of that. One of my favorite recommendations is the secondary suites one, the 10K, to add a door to the city. That, that just makes a whole lot of sense. If you think about it, like, if council can fund an incentive where we move folks to suite their basement and add a door and an expedited rate to the city, and all it costs us is 10K, that's a cheap door to add to our housing supply. I think it's, I think it's those kinds of solutions potentially, those kinds of carrots that are going to help us move forward. I love the fact that there was talk today about the fact that this allows us to make a marked improvement on our efforts to realize the MDP targets that we, we've been talking at great length about. These are things, conversations, we will circle back around to again through the, the MDP refresh, the CTP refresh, and the land use. So we're, we're just going to come back around to this again. And I also want to remind council and remind myself, just, one of the first things I said to planning, to Mr. Dalgleish when I got here and went through my first public hearing, was like, why do I have to sit and listen to councillor Walcott's ward for eight items in a row on RCG? And can we fix this? How do we fix this? Please show me a pathway. Well, it's in front of us right now. I also want to, I also want to mention the fact that I've had a candid conversation with David White, who, at Civic Works, who said, I'm going to be out of work if, if you guys pass this. That, he's adding, he's a great, he does great work. He does modeling. He shows, shows people in neighborhoods how these RCG upgrades aren't going to necessarily kill the character of their neighborhood with great pictures and all the rest. We're going to be putting, he's going to have to find, put his considerable talents, direct them elsewhere if we vote this through. And I, I think we should. I want to speak to the fact that short-term rentals were brought up today. We have an item on the, today. We're going to talk about STRs, making sure we get the regulatory mix right that we're going to talk about today, and that councilman has really robust work to make sure that we get that mix right, and involving policy folks from the University of Calgary. Ultimately, this is about housing that solves many other issues, provides safety for families, it helps improve things like food security. This is going to lower costs, it allows more parents to make hard choices, to leave somebody at home, which then has all those other spin-off effects, like in terms of childminding, proves health, education outcomes. This is an opportunity, much like councillor Walcott said, to get better outcomes across the city. Is this a hard decision? Yes, but it's one I absolutely believe we need to make today. I'm close.
You don't get to close, but that's good. We'll go to councillor Penner, please.
Thanks. I'm actually hoping I can move the amendment first. So clerks, I believe you have that ready? No. I thought we had that ready for clerks. The new number two, and removing number four.
Oh, you can start talking, we'll get it to them.
Okay, great. Thanks. So the new amendment, very quickly, will be to direct administration to report back through Community Development Committee quarterly on those recommendations that have no new funding requirements. And that would also mean that number four becomes obsolete. In talking with administration, they are in favor of this and can tie it with the corporate affordable housing refresh strategy and all the work that is going along there, too, and really link these two pieces of work together. So once we get that recommendation up, I'm so sorry, clerks. Mixed communication on who is putting that, getting that to you. And another reason to bring this forward at this time, and to bring it forward in this way really is, this is important work. And us seeing it on a regular basis and not waiting for two years allows us to be reminded of how important this work is and to continue to hear the stories of the impact that we're having, or perhaps explore future work that we need to be doing that isn't moving fast enough. And so us keeping a pulse on this means that we're not losing sight of a really, really important issue. I'm trying to debate and kill time here now, so I'm just going to wait, and I'll have clerks put it up, and you can read it, and I would ask that you support this.
Councillor, do you want to just explain what it is, councillor Penner, while they're trying to get it up? Maybe one more time?
Okay. Just, just, just remind everybody what it is. So the new number two will be that administration reports quarterly through Community Development Committee, starting in Q4 2023, so starting this winter, late winter, and that, on those recommendations that don't require any funding. And then it would, are we rescinding number four at the same time, or did we want to do that separately? Okay, and then it would just be rescinding recommendation number four at the same time.
While it's coming up, can I get a seconder for this? You can second. Councillor Walcott to second it. Is there anyone that wants to enter into the debate on this one? And I apologize, we didn't get it to clerks quickly enough. Councillor Wong, have you had a chance to look at it before you debate? You comfortable? Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councillor Penner. I had a chance to review this earlier when it was distributed in draft, and I have my argument, my debate, that I'm going to put now, was actually a debate on the original motion. I have a problem with both this and the original motion, because there's a lot of things that are lacking in here. One of the things that we talked about, first off, again, I want to thank, thank the task force for putting forward the recommendations and the actions there. One of the things that we find is lacking is how the virtues, and pardon me, I can not say virtue signaling, but the virtues associated with the recommendations apply to the context of how we govern here, how we are, have the capacity here, how we have the finance here. What we haven't taken, we've taken recommendations, but we haven't put it through an administrative process to determine whether or not we can, can't, should, shouldn't, and how prioritize-wise it affects everything else we do here. So bringing this as a quarterly update still leaves me wondering, you know, have we done the due diligence? Have we done the, you know, the prioritization? Have we understood the unintended consequences of this? So again, you know, I love everything that we talk about in terms of why, why would the task force recommendations are great. I love that we are addressing the housing crisis, but I think we owe it to ourselves as councillors to, you know, get a administrative process to ensure that the due diligence, the assurances that the recommendations that we are putting forward are recommendations that we not only can achieve, but will get us to the desired outcomes. The other concern I have about some of the recommendations, again, is particularly when we talk of the RCG blanket zoning, zoning, if you want to call it that way, we have a public hearing process in there. And a public hearing process, if we make them automatically all one blanket omnibus motion to make them all RCG, then any future use changes will not be debated in council. So again, where's your voices? Where's our responsibility to them? Unless we make changes perhaps in the downstream effects of our development process. The other, I guess the final concern that I have is, you know, there are a lot of recommendations that are here, but there are also a lot of other recommendations we didn't consider here as well. And some of those I've spoken to Campbell Berry about, which we haven't debated about here. There are other ways to get to the immediate crisis that we have, and I'm not sure proceeding to a statutory update on a quarterly basis if we've missed a step. So for that, I'm not supportive of doing this until we put in a place where an administrative due diligence is put in place. Thank you.
Councillor Walcott, please.
Just, this is purely in, in response to councillor Wong, because we've talked about this, and it's worthwhile saying in public what we've talked about in private is, everything in this process has to go through administrative due diligence. Everything. There isn't a single part of this that can do anything without administrative due diligence. That over, that even, you even, we can't even talk about just the realities that there was five administrative mess supports. was five administrative mess supports to make sure that the task force wasn't bringing things forward that didn't make sense. You're right that there are other things. I'm actually always an advocate of go farther faster. And trust me, there are things that I looked at when I saw this and I was like, oh yeah, we could do, we could do more. There absolutely are other things. Are there other ways? I debate you heavily on that due to the fact that we demanded of them a multi-jurisdictional scan that they ended up performing internationally. The process of a public hearing, the process of the implementation plan, coming back to Community Development Committee, these are our checkpoints. This is really why I emphasized in the early, in my open, the idea that we're not actually debating the solution. We're debating how much power we give our communities to decide who their neighbors are. Because when we ask the public and we say things like, oh, like, how do you feel about an RCG? And their answer is never. I'm against development. It's, let's talk about parking. Let's talk about everything that exists within the DP process with which we've already been assured at multiple stages. And it's why almost every single RCG goes through. It's just the reality that most of these problems will be addressed in a process that exists right now that includes public consultation. If we want to ensure that every single decision that we do goes through a public hearing, then the answer is, is that we're not actually solving the housing crisis. That's just the reality of the problem, is that we're just not addressing it anymore because we are leaving in place regulatory barriers that have been statistically proven to increase the cost of housing in the name of me being able to choose what my neighbor can do with their property, mostly so that I can maintain my parking, of which I have lots of if I'm willing to just walk a little further. That's what we hear. That's what we hear every time. So with that, I hope you support this because there is a process still.
Don't see anybody else in the queue for debates, so I will add a couple of thoughts. Firstly, administration was a part of the task force, an active part of the task force. They approved these recommendations. So to say that it hasn't had administrative eyes on it, I think is, is not quite accurate. What we heard from members of council today that were uncomfortable with the original recommendations is that waiting until Q4 of 2025 for an update seemed like an awfully long time. So to accommodate that, the Chair of Community Development Committee is good with having quarterly updates starting at the end of this year. That gives you more check-in points. It gives you potentially more decision points that might be needed. That was another concern that people had. The way the original recommendations were written, some people were concerned it would have to be a reconsideration vote. This makes it very clear that whatever comes to you at committee could be a decision point. So it should quell that concern. In the original recommendations, it also talks about having the opportunity to embed things within budget. That was also something that council was quite concerned about. So this amendment really speaks to the fact that you have greater opportunity to have your eyes on what is happening with the implementation strategy, and that is something that members of council had asked for. And, you know, I care about our administration a lot. I think they're really good people. But we had a task force of experts weigh in on this, which included our administration. And I'm not going to second guess what the experts had to say. We've already heard that we had the same advice seven years ago and we just didn't feel like taking it. So I won't be making that mistake again. I'll definitely be supporting this. Over to you to close, Counselor Penner.
I have more debate on the main, but I think this, this gives us, you know, that assurance that we are going to stay on top of this and we are going to make sure that the work gets done. And that is, that is the rule of council, to hold accountable and to hold true what we're committing to. So I'll happily welcome these at Community Development Committee so long as I'm Chair and look forward to seeing them if I'm not. Closed.
Escrib to vote, everyone. Counselor Wong, your vote, please. Thank you. Counselor McLean, your vote, please.
No.
Thank you. Mayor Gonda, all the votes are in. Could you display the results, please? That motion is carried 10 to 5 with Counselors Chabot, McLean, Putmans, Wong and Chu voting against. Next up is Counselor Chabot with an amendment.
I believe, but clerks has it, then I believe the amendment is, might be considered clerical or maybe even a friendly possibly. Recommendation number one says receive the report and information. Typically, when we have these sorts of recommendations, it says for information. And the reason I want to add those two words specifically for information is because there are some recommendations, many of the recommendations from the task force that I 100% support. Some of them I can't support just based on my past experience and what I know, the bulk of the folks in my community want me to vote the way they would like me to vote, the people who actually put me in this seat. And so because some of those recommendations are included in the task force, I don't want to set a false expectation by having it just receive all for, and receive all of the recommendations because I, I don't genuinely believe in all of them. So I just want to add the words for information so that it can all be considered, but it is part of the corporate record and, and in my opinion should be, those words should have been included. But again, if it needs to be done as an amendment, I do believe I have a seconder.
Counselor Chabot, with your permission, I'm just going to ask administration, is anyone fussed about the addition of these words? Mr. Ward's indicating no, he's fine with it, but we'll get you to just state that.
No.
Okay, good. So there's no problem with it, Counselor Chabot. You've moved it. Who is seconding it?
Second.
Counselor Chu is seconding it. Does anybody wish to debate this? I don't see anybody in the queue. Over to you to close, Counselor Chabot.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Like I said, I just think there's a lot of great recommendations. I wouldn't want to lose any of them and just want to make sure that it's part of the record for information because I can't support 100% of them.
And you're closed. All right. Escrib to vote, everyone. Counselor Wong, your vote, please. Thank you. Counselor McLean, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Gonda, all the votes are in. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. So there are two amendments to the main now. I believe clerks, you're going to pop them up as soon as you can. I do have folks in the queue to debate on the main. Counselor Penner, you're up next.
Thanks. I'm glad we did some amendments. So I had a chance to collect myself. Housing is emotional. Housing is very personal, myself included, and something Counselor Walcott said really struck me. So I'm going to try to get through what I can and then maybe I'll tell a story. When we look at the housing task force recommendations, when we talk about the number of people that will be coming to our city in the next four years, so 25,000 people a year on average, you know, if you average that out to two and a half people per home, that's sort of the average in Calgary. That's only 1,000 units. That's like 10% of what we need when you think about it. Like it's, it's very low and we're talking about growth in established areas. So this 1,000 units, you know, on top of some of the other work that we're doing, we are still a far cry from our MDP goals. So I think we need to, to keep in mind that even through this, you know, we have work to do. We have a lot of work to do, both in new units, you know, in new and growing areas, but in established areas as well. This is just, this is just a drop in the bucket. Earlier this week, we got the spring research results from the Citizens Satisfaction Survey. Homelessness, poverty and affordable housing is the fourth most important issue for Calgarians. Growing survey over survey, every survey we have gotten, it has increased and has become more prevalent. Calgarians are telling us this matters to them. When we look at our service strengths and opportunities, 96% of people say that affordable housing is important, but it only has a satisfaction rate of 53%. We are barely passing. We are barely, barely meeting the expectations of Calgarians for what we are delivering. And I think we need to take that very seriously. In terms of service investment, the top ranked by Invest More, at the top of that list is affordable housing. This is what Calgarians are telling us. This is right from Calgarians across all income levels. This is right from Calgarians across all diversity metrics. We have the data that tells us this is the right move. This is what Calgarians are asking us to do. When we look at the data around affordability, our salary as a counselor, I don't think any of us would walk away and say it's a poor salary. We work a lot of hours, but I don't think any of us would walk away and say it's a poor salary. At a 10% down payment, our salary cannot even afford the median home price in Calgary. When we talk about those people who are below $80,000, who have less than a 40% market share, that's the majority of our staff. So when we talk about serving Calgarians, we're serving ourselves. We're serving our staff. We're serving the people who work for this corporation. Homeownership can't be the only goal. And every time we talk about homeownership, we negate the fact that people want choice. Some people want to rent. Some people have no choice but to rent. Some people enjoy rentals because you know what it means? Maybe they don't have to buy a lawnmower and that's one more cost that they can't afford. And so if we want to talk about homeownership being a goal, then we also simultaneously need to talk about wages. And that's out of our jurisdiction, some would say. So we need to get serious about what we can control. And what we can control is market availability. In 2019, I found myself needing to rent. I had no shame in that. And I found myself needing to rent and a really, really great income at the time. And then COVID hit. And I cried myself to sleep for months because I didn't know if I could afford my rent. And I had to beg, borrow and steal because I was simultaneously trying to school my children and be a contractor. And let me tell you, as a contractor trying to get a mortgage is nearly impossible. And it's nearly impossible when any equity you've built up is tied up in legal proceedings of a divorce. So when we talk about housing for people, we're talking about good, kind, caring, capable citizens who need a home. And maybe that's a rental and maybe they can own and purchase. But what we and when we can enable opportunities for people to get and stay in their communities, because let me tell you about the disruption of moving your children out of a neighborhood. We have so much work to do in serving citizens and we have so much work to do in understanding and hearing the stories and providing opportunities.
That's time, Counselor.
Thanks.
Counselor Dollywell, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's great work, first of all. I mean, it took months and months and, and this report is with six main recommendations. Not everybody's going to agree on all six and definitely I have my doubts about one of them. But that being said, you know, we are, we're a city of great prosperity, but we still have people who are left behind, people who want a home, a house for themselves and their family, and they still can't afford it. There's lack of housing due to supply side. There is just a, sometimes the prices are too high. I know when my parents decided to buy first house as immigrants, how happy we were because we finally had a place that we wanted to, we could call our own. And it wasn't easy. There's first three, four years where we had to rent. And so one of the things in this report is that there's less emphasis on rent, but I'm pretty sure over next few weeks and few months, we can, we can find a solution to that. And these, like I said, these recommendations are not going to make everybody happy. That's given. But, you know, I was skeptical coming in, but I'm willing to give it a chance. After all the Q and A, after what I've heard, I'm willing to give some, put some political oxygen into it and, and take it to a step where we could see a final outcome. That being said, that is not, there is no guarantee that I will support that final outcome. But I want to start the process, at least give it a chance and see what that final outcome looks like, even on recommendation one. So that being said, I am happy that these recommendations are coming.
Can everybody check and make sure you're muted, please? Please go ahead, Counselor. Sorry about that.
Yeah, like I said, I can put some political weight on it, but I'm really, really looking and the one who's now is on our administration and all of us actually around in this, in this council chamber to do a robust consultation and engagement with our Calgarians because we are building a city for Calgarians and Calgarians deserve to have their say. And next few months, I'm hoping that we listen to them and because I feel and I totally believe in it, the power lies with Calgarians, not with this council. With that being said, I can start, I can support this journey with no guarantee that I will support the final outcome, but I'm looking forward to those engagements. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Putmans, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Task Force, for the very high quality work. I think you've set us up well for a result. You're not going to be happy with my conclusion, but I'd like to pick up where Counselor Dollywell just left off a moment ago. I tend to agree with you, sir, that the power rests with the people and not with this council. To that end, I think that the work we have would be far better used as part of a public education program. It demystifies me to this moment that we're starting with the end result, deciding on something, then going to the public to consult. I just, I just don't understand this process. I think we should go to the public with an education program, taking the good work we've done, and then have a successful public engagement. We've seen what some of the results to LAP look like. This will be a lot of heavy lifting and a lot of work without guaranteed results, but I think it's a democratic process which should be fundamentally important to maintain. Without the public acceptance, the results we see will just be elusive. Just because 14 or 15 people in this room might think this is the way to go, that does not guarantee success or in fact even necessarily guarantee the results we want. I think it's tremendously important the population of Calgary have to get behind this. When we look at blanket rezoning for hundreds of thousands of homes, I am shattered to think that we should shoulder that responsibility without more, more public support. With that, I say thank you.
Counselor Winess, please.
So I think like many counselors, there's a lot of great things out of this. There's things that we have to, I guess, if we want to support it, plug our nose and vote yes for. When it was mentioned that Victoria was one of the communities that was looked at as a beacon of how this should be done, but BCNDP put them on a watch list for failing to meet affordable rentals, house density, proximity to amenities and wait lists for social housing. They are one of the 10 communities on that list. And then when we look at rent caps, you can look again to BC where even with that regulation, there's a long waitlist to go before a tribunal that landlords are putting renters on the spot and say, either you agree to a 40% increase or we're selling the property. So is that going to fix our problem? When we look to those that are way more unaffordable than us. We even talked earlier that, like, I have no problem with RCG. I think it's a great zoning, but it still misses the mark when we have to build high-rise apartments. We, we need Memorial to be denser than it is. We need our urban centers to be denser than they are. And so it feels like we, we didn't balance our problem with where we really need to put density and, and we've, I've watched us debate density, which is in a perfect area for it and, and go away from where we are. When I brought RCG back, when we were talking about how we grow our city, counselors thought they were on candid camera and laughed. That was an opportunity for us to vote for RCG and have the votes to get it across, but we didn't because we wanted to package it in something that actually took longer for us to get where we needed to be. And instead of us actually being able to package it away of And instead of us actually being able to package it away of, okay, here's where, there's no cost, here's where there is cost. I don't want any more money going into the downtown strategy. If it was working, then why do we have to continue to put municipal dollars in it? Where's the province? Where's the federal government? Because if that program was working, they should have contributed money into that program by now. So this is where you put council with all of this package together and not really following those ROIs on what we've already approved and what we've been told time and time again is going to solve the problem that exists in our community. So yeah, I continue to go back and forth all day and I'm, I'm going to continue to listen to debate, but I think we also need to bring Calgarians along. There's been so many times this council has done this, and the biggest comment and the continued reach of trust for Calgarians is that they're not brought along. I'm reading the, the letters that we're getting, and they have great feedback that could be incorporated, that would add density to help us solve this problem. And it's a great compromise because this is close, but I think we needed more conversation and more robust conversation to solve a crisis that is a Canadian crisis. It's not one city, it's not one municipality, it's a Canadian crisis. Because if someone sells out in the Vancouver market or the Toronto market, guess what? They're coming here and bidding up our price because they are used to another market. They don't know what the competition is here. And so that is why you're also seeing it go up. But I'll stop there because there's so many more people.
Thank you councillor. Over to you councillor Sharp.
Thanks Mayor. Again, thanks Task Board members. As I said earlier today, I think you delivered on exactly what we did ask for, and I appreciate your efforts on all of this and this important issue. I do have some concerns with a few of the recommendations in here. I'm a bit frustrated, we don't have a bit more of an opportunity to bait some of them on their merits individually. And I'm also a bit concerned, administration begins work on some of these immediately without a chance for us to really evaluate how this fits into our other priorities, like safety, transit safety. Unfortunately, this isn't the only crisis we face. We face many right now as a growing city. For those reasons, I won't be supporting the recommendations today. And that being said, I do know we need to take action to address housing affordability because I also know firsthand what it's like. I have immigrant parents living with me because they can't afford to live on their own. So I get it. And it's not about, you know, me not having support or empathy. It's, it's a lot what's sitting in front of us, and it's not about the money, and it's not disagreeing that we should do something, but it's a leap to think we should just accept the expert recommendations with no further debate on what it all means, on whether Calgarians support those recommendations. And as if really today, there's only one answer to these questions. So with that, I can't support this. Mayor, I would like one number one and five called separately, if that's okay with you. Thanks.
Councillor, we can call one separately? There is no five.
Oh, sorry, four. I forgot, we changed it.
Okay, so one and five, or do you want one and four called together?
Oh yeah, could we call one and four together? And, and maybe one more point is, I do believe councillor Penner's amendment is a good one. It's good governance. Looking forward to those reports coming back there, but please call one and four separately. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going over to councillor Shebault.
Yes, thank you. And I want to echo some of the comments that some of my colleagues have mentioned about, there's been a lot of great work here, a lot of great recommendations in the, in the work that the task force did. However, having sat through many, many council meetings debating secondary suites and RCGs and, and seeing the amount of pushback that we've received from some of the communities and some of these changes, I'm reluctant to, to move forward on setting us up for failure. What I mean by that is that we do know that a public process has to be undertaken before we can do even a city-initiated redesignation. And so what I envision that may happen if we move forward with all of these recommendations, including a blanket RCG, is that, is that we will get a lot of public submissions. Could potentially be an extremely long public hearing that may end up with the result of us not approving it, just based on simply public pressure. I do believe there are some communities that are, would easily accept transitioning from RC1 and RC2 to RCG. And, and I think if we had a targeted approach to that, to look at allowing that sort of blanket rezoning in some of those select communities, that there would be a lot more buy-in. But I can tell you that my communities rallied against secondary suites, let alone going blanket RCG. This would be like secondary suites on steroids. I, I just, I, there's absolutely no way that I could get convinced my communities to support that major of a change. And while there may be many communities, as I said, that would be very supportive of this sort of a, of a change, it's, it's beyond what I think I could ever convince my residents to supporting. And, and so I'm afraid that, that moving forward with this will result in a massive public hearing, which may result in ultimately these recommendations being turned down specifically on the blanket zoning. So I can't support that. If there was ways that we could segregate this out and, and pick and choose some of the recommendations and maybe even put a fence around some areas that would be more suitable to this sort of, of a blanket change, I would be more apt or inclined to support that. But as it's presented in this form currently, I cannot move forward with recommendations two and three, but extremely happy to support recommendations one and four.
Councillor Wong, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I started my debate earlier when we talked about the amendment to number two, and I'm going to continue on that point. You've heard from councillor Sharp, you've heard from councillor Shebault, and I'm going to try to reiterate some of that. But more importantly, in my life in Calgary and in 40-plus years of being here, similar to, you know, councillor Penner, I've gone through the same situation of being renting. Currently, right now, I have, in my household residence, three different rental situations, university students, immigrants, and others who can't be in housing, similar to the arguments that we've put here. But when I ask them this, them the question, what is it they're looking for? You know, what is it, how do we provide them a way out of this situation? Is it providing them increasing housing stock, supply, choice? A lot of them tell me it's about income. It's one of the things that we don't address in this is how do we provide greater income so they can move out of this situation? When we take a look at the value of houses here, the value of rentals here compared to Vancouver and Toronto, you know, yes, we're rising to the same temperature that they're at, but the greater problem is, you know, of good affordable income. And we don't address it here. We also were in Toronto weeks ago, last week I guess it was, in FCM. Major, major municipalities talked about housing as an affordable challenge. But what they also spoke about was local government is not the only solution here. We are certainly boots on the ground and have to make it happen, but we need greater advocacy. We need greater funding. We need greater strategies at a national provincial level. And I realize this is part of the equation here, right? But moving into implementation without clearly strategizing the pragmatic approaches within realms of possibility and realism, you know, without, you know, jumping into the void of, you know, we have a crisis, we've got to jump now, okay? Has the unintended consequences where we may not be prioritizing the things that are most important or have the greatest impact. No slight against the five members of administration on the task force. I know you guys, you know, have put in a lot of great effort, but what's been missing for me is we've had five hours of debate here, five hours digesting here. But what I haven't had an opportunity to say, to feed back some of the other ideas that I'm hearing from my constituents' community with you, to bring back those strategies, those ideas. So I'm not against what we're talking about here. What I'm asking for is just a little more time to bring back clear guidance on what implementation plan can be, and then with that, move forward with recommendation number, item number two here. That's what I'm looking for. And unfortunately, that's not the amendment, not the recommendation here. So again, don't get me wrong, I am fully supportive of the need to move forward. I understand the crisis that we are in, but we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to the public for the due diligence necessary to ensure we prioritize and resource and implement those things that are truly going to solve the problem now, as opposed to shotgun and hope we solve the problem altogether. With that, I'll close.
Let's go to councillor Meehan, please.
Thanks Mayor, and thanks to all my colleagues for their debate. It's been interesting to listen to and, you know, I think when you, when you go to policy school, they always talk about how healthcare is one of those things that just doesn't get reformed because the political costs are too high. And I really think housing is, is the new house, healthcare in a lot of ways. Because some of these recommendations, as have been pointed out by people, you know, there are many, they might, they might be really important, but they're certainly not politically convenient. And I think that I appreciate why the task force brought them together as like a suite of measures, because nothing really entirely stands on its own. But I am worried, similar to councillor Shebault, about heading in a direction where, you know, we, we send administration to, to bring forward something that I, I don't, I don't think is probably going, could ever be supported by the public. And that's part of the challenge is that Calgarians and Canadians are so concerned about housing because they're so deeply invested in housing, which makes it very, very difficult to make the types of changes that are ultimately needed to make. And so I think, like relying on experts to some extent is, is really the direction to go because we know what the possible solutions are. And it's very difficult sometimes to just, to make these decisions, but I do think that they need to be made. You know, I'm hearing people, I think so much of what is driving the hesitation on this is, is that RCG recommendation. And I get why it's all packaged together, but at the same time, like, I, I don't see, like, moving forward. It's going to be hard. I wish we had sort of pulled that part out because on the one hand, I hear people when they say, you know, secondary suites was really unpopular. And when we legalized secondary suites everywhere in the city, like the sky did not fall, and at the same time, we did not solve the housing crisis. And that will be the exact same thing with RCG citywide. The sky will not fall, and when it happens, people will, will come around to it, but it also won't be the silver bullet that I think, that some people hope it will be. So honestly, I, I'm worried about proceeding forward. I think if, if you don't agree with a suite, I think it's, it's really challenging. I think administration could maybe bring it forward in a different way in the future because we're going to really struggle, I think, today. People are going to feel like they have to support it, but they have no intention of supporting an RCG blanket. And if, if that's the case, like, why are we, why are we going down this rabbit hole? Because it won't get better. In a public hearing, I think it would get worse. So those are my thoughts and concerns. I really appreciate the work and I am supportive of having that conversation, but I really understand that other people are not and wish we could have packaged this differently. That's it.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll just throw in my comments as well here. I've heard the same concern now from a number of members of council that you're worried about one specific piece of the recommendations that are before you. And you have every ability to debate that particular piece, that change to the land use. You have every opportunity to debate that and vote in the way that you feel is right as the updates come and as we go into a public hearing. We will have to go into public engagement in a public hearing. So you do have that opportunity to vote against something that you don't believe in. Today, what's been put before you by a group that we asked to take this on is a set of recommendations. And they are saying that these are the things that we need to do. These are frankly actions that we should have taken seven years ago when this was presented to council and it got shelved and ignored. So for the time that I've been on council, my question has been, why does housing not have a home? There's no department internally that looks at housing writ large. We have an affordable housing unit. There is no mandate for council to look at it through any committee, so this council added a mandate. This council is the first one to actually tackle housing. So here we have a set of recommendations that are allowing us to take back the responsibility that we've been shirking for a very long time. And I'll tell you why I say that quite confidently. The federal government has made it perfectly clear in all the advocacy that we have done. And to councillor Wong's question about we need more advocacy, we have been at this for years. The advocacy continues on, and we've been told in no uncertain terms, calling a national housing crisis is not something we're going to do. Each municipality has to do it on their own, and you have to demonstrate that you're doing something about it, or we will not give you funding. That's the reality. That's the situation we're in right now. So in order to be taken seriously, we have to show that we're doing something, that we're going to take some sort of action. So we retained a group of experts to give us their best advice, which they did. It included our administration. And the question that we should be asking ourselves right now, based on everything they've told us, is who do we serve? And if we serve 100% of the population, regardless of who voted for you, then stop and think about the number that only 5% of the population has access to 60% of the housing stock. 98% do not. It was further broken down for you by the fact that those people have to make more than $85,000 a year, and a lot of people don't. So what are we here to do if we are not here to serve the people who frankly have no voice because they're out working two jobs, possibly three, just to keep a roof over their heads? We have an absolute obligation and responsibility to serve people. And if we're only interested in serving the 5% that are doing fine without us, that is incredibly shameful. Public education and engagement programs. These recommendations have been out in the public very transparently since the 4th of May. People have known about this task force for a very long time. We know we're in a housing crisis. We're not going to kid ourselves into thinking that we're not. So if we are going to take these folks seriously, and if we're going to take economic development seriously, who says we will lose talent and we will lose businesses, then we have to show some action. This is only a starting point. This is a starting point, and there's more work to be done. The implementation plan will be presented to us. And I would remind you that we heard two important words today, crisis and trauma. It's a housing crisis and people will be in trauma if they can't live with dignity. The last time we heard those two words together, it was around mental health, it was around mental health, it was around addictions, it was around public transit, and we stepped up every time and made investments. So why can we do all of those things and yet we can't even take recommendations seriously around housing? And I will also not break apart one, two, three, and four in any manner. This task force gave us their best recommendations. So I will not do a disservice and disrespect them by receiving it for information only without their call to action. They've asked us to do something, I will not break these apart. So if you really want to dig in and vote on the things you like and dislike, number two gets you there. Number three gets you to the point of budget. Over to you to close councillor Penner. No councillor, well cut.
It's cool, it's a Courtney either way. I'm not shocked by any of the debate. I think that's something that I, you know, it's pretty easy to recognize. I think a lot of our conversations that we've had throughout the month have led us to this point, so I'm not shocked. I don't, I have stories. Like, I don't think it's a secret that when I was running for council, for whatever reason, I was targeted for not living in my own ward, right? I taught at Western, but I was targeted for not living there, right? It's, it's not a secret. So when I tried to move into the inner city, I had to cash out my pension just to be able to afford the, the back of an MCG. It's not an RCG. I wasn't that lucky because I couldn't afford it. When I hear what we're talking about and we, we talk about like, you know, who, who can afford what housing and whatnot and where, I have this, I have this like impression from council that you think you're safe somehow. That you, that you're under this impression that like these problems are kind of the inner cities' problems. Oh, and they are today. But to councillor Shebault's point, you're, you're on a clock. That clock has actually been defined by administration. They have it in supplemental slides. They talk about the life cycling of neighborhoods, they talk about the natural form of decay, they talk about the socioeconomic status of your communities and your ability to afford the renovations, to maintain your housing stock over the course of a period of time. And the Northeast has the lowest capacity to maintain the housing stock as it is and are within 10 to 15 years of that redevelopment stage that my community started 15 years ago. The wave is coming. You've been seeing the water recede for years. It's on its You've been seeing the water recede for years, it's on its way. So I get the idea that, like, oh, it's not my problem now, it's not my community's problem now, but it will be. Sometimes this process is a little bit like drowning, but not learning how to swim until your head's underwater. And, and I don't know what else to say, and so I, I don't have a big kind of message to, like, anchor home, other than a very simple reality, that you have numerous stage gates. We've witnessed so many municipalities wait until it's too late, implemented these things and failed, because it was too late. That doesn't mean that the solutions weren't correct, it's a sole question of time. It was too late. When I, when we praised Toronto for what they did, the irony of praising Toronto, because we, as was the Councillor Wong just said, we were just there, is that all the councils were like, finally, we did it. First, we had to not have a mayor with strong powers, because they vetoed every other time we tried to do it. And thankfully, all it means is that our city will be unaffordable forever, just less unaffordable than it could have been had we not acted. So I think at this point, there's nothing new to say. Just go to vote.
All right, escribe to vote, please.
No.
Thank you. Mayor Kondakal, the votes are in.
Could you display the results, please? Motion's defeated, seven to eight, with Councillor Chabot, McLean, Putmans, Winess, Wong, Sharp, Demong, and Chu voting against. You know, I will thank the Task Force for your time, since council clearly couldn't do that. Thank you for your time, thank you for your expertise. My apologies, it couldn't be done formally by the entire council. That takes us to our next item, which is 9.3.3.